Good evening, we'll go ahead and call the meeting of the April 3rd Planning Commission meeting to order. If we could have a determination of quorum, please.
Sarah Savileczek.
Present.
Larry Chesney.
Present.
James Barnes.
Here.
Thomas Bruce.
Here.
Francine Doncic.
Present.
Philip Heran.
Here.
And Michael Lawson.
Present.
Thank you very much. Commissioner Doncic, would you lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance, please?
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Edwards, can we have the ethics law announcement, please?
I don't have a speaker. Commissioners are reminded that if with respect to any matter or any person coming before the commission today, you have received a gift or loan, you have a pecuniary interest, you have a commitment in a private capacity such as a family, employment, business, or similar relationship, or you provided representation or counseling before an agency to a person or entity for compensation within the last year on a matter being considered tonight, you must disclose that gift, loan, interest, commitment, or prior representation at the time the matter is being considered. And you must furthermore abstain from deliberation or voting on the matter if it is clear that the gift, loan, interest, commitment, or prior representation would materially affect the independence of judgment of a reasonable person. Commissioners are also reminded that under the Planning Commission rules, if you have had any contact outside this meeting with any persons interested in a matter coming before the commission today, you should disclose the nature of that contact at this meeting.
Thank you. The appeal process, Mr. Lloyd?
Sure. Most decisions rendered by the Planning Commission are appealable to the Board of County Commissioners. If you disagree with the decision of the Planning Commission and you want to appeal its action, you may do so in writing within ten calendar days from the date that the decision being appealed is signed by the Planning Commission Chair and/or the Secretary of the Planning Commission, filed with the Secretary of the Planning Commission, and mailed to the original applicant in the proceeding being appealed, in accordance with Washoe County Code. Please call the planning staff immediately at (328) 6100 for information on the appeal procedure and the application fee.
Thank you very much. We're now at general public comment. Do we have public comment?
We do. We have Russell Earl, followed by Stephen Walgast.
Good evening, folks. My name is Russell Earl. This is an off-agenda appeal to you, folks. I am the President of the Silver Knowles Community Organization. In the next few months, you folks will be getting a plan before you for a housing development. I'm not going to get into much on the details of that. I would ask you to consider some things, though, not only for this potential one coming up in a couple of months, but for all future developments where we have a certain density right now and developers are asking for a much higher density. I was a professional firefighter in the Bay Area for 15 years. I'm sure we're all very familiar with the Coffee Park Fire down in Santa Rosa this last fall. The preliminary investigation into that fire, not to the cause, but contributing factors to that fire, density of housing was a serious contributing factor in that fire. Fifty-five-hundred-plus homes were lost. They had considerable resources to fight that fire, but due to the density of the housing, once it got started, it was an auto ignition from structure to structure to structure. And that's where you're looking at in the seven to 10 units per acre. We currently, in our area, have one unit for every 2.57 acres in Silver Knowles. So what I would ask is that you folks take these things into consideration. We do not have the fire protection resources that the Bay Area had for that fire here in the Truckee Meadows. I would like to see Truckee Meadows in Washoe County become the leader in this region for thinking of these things and maybe coming up with some better fire resistivity building standards. And when these builders come to you asking to pack as many homes into an area that's in a wildland interface, Silver Knowles just had a fire back in July. The only thing that saved our butts was that we had five jet air tankers in the area at Sted fighting the Long Valley Fire that immediately started fighting our fire. We had 2,500 acres burned in a matter of a couple hours. And the wind switched 120 degrees and saved the entire neighborhood. Also, the Truckee Meadows Fire Protection District and the responding agencies did a phenomenal job protecting about a dozen structures that were in the direct flame path. But if we had seven to 14 structures per acre, we would not have the ability to protect those. We would lose all of those. And I would hate to see people come back at some point and go, "Who was responsible for this?" I would like to see us be ahead of the curve on this and keep the buildings apart, especially when you're in a wildland interface. So that's just the one thing I'd like to have you folks consider, not with just our particular one coming up, but all of the builders that are asking for massive density increases and changes to zoning. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Hi, Steve Walgast, 5220 Cedarwood Drive, Reno. I'd like to address the issue of cash bonds. Washoe County should hold developers accountable for possible flooding, roadway damage, or blasting damage to neighboring homes with a cash bond. The developers typically create limited liability corporations to support their plans, which are disbanded as soon as the work is done. If there is damage that is not immediately evident, there is no longer a corporation to hold liable for the damage. This is a tactic on the part of developers to evade responsibility for the damage their work causes to the neighbors. If the injured residents sue the county for an inadequate plan, it is the county taxpayers who shoulder the burden for the damage caused by the developer. Municipal bonds come in two forms, come in two forms, an insurance bond and the more widely-used cash bond. An insurance bond is where the municipality asks the developer to provide a bond posted by an insurance company for the amount of potential damages the municipality feels it could occur due to poor performance by the developer or they're widely, or used widely by contractors. The reason this type of bond is no longer popular is that it takes a legal case to get the money from an insurance company. Often, the legal fees end up being as much as the damages sought by the injured residents. For the more popular cash bond, the developer borrows a sum from a bank to cover potential liability with the agreement that the money remains at the bank until the end of the bond. The developer assigns the municipality the right to access the bond money if the developer causes damage to the residents. The amount borrowed is usually equal to half the total estimated cost of the project, and the developer usually only pays about 1% per year to the bank for this money. The bank keeps the money until the end of the bonding period, at which time the bond is dissolved. Should the municipality need access to the money, no lawsuit is required. The bond arrangement could last for several years after the completion of the project to protect the area residents. I'm hoping you will consider this as a requirement for your developers moving forward. Thank you.
Thank you. No further public comment?
Aye.
Thank you. Is there anyone else wishing to speak on public comment? If so, you need to fill out a comment card. Closing public comment. Motion to approve the agenda.
I make a motion?
Oh, well.
You move? I'll second.
Francine, and seconded by?
Chesney.
Chesney. Thank you very much. All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Possible action to approve the minutes from March 6th.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. We're now to our public hearing items. Item 8A, if we could have the project case identified, Mr. Lloyd?
All right, this abandonment case number WAB 18-0001, Cheryl Lane. For possible action hearing and discussion to approve the partial abandonment of a 33-foot access easement by reducing its width to 15 feet. The 18 feet of the access easement proposed to be abandoned is the northernmost 18 feet of the easement that runs along the southern edge of the property, of the subject property. If approved, the abandoned portion of the easement would be conveyed to the owner, applicant of the proposed abandonment. Any approval only applies to whatever interest Washoe County owns in the easement. Prior to the presentation by Senior Planner Chad Geisinger, are there any disclosures by the Planning Commission?
I will do that, thank you. So, any disclosures by commissioners on ethics or ex parte on this project?
I have none.
So I'll open the public hearing.
Good evening, Planning Commissioners. Chair Chavaleczeck, sorry. This is abandonment case number WAB 18-001, a request to partially abandon a 33-foot access easement commonly referred to as the government patent easements. I know this board has had experience with these before. The subject property is located at 15750 Cheryl Lane, which you can see in the vicinity map there, is approximately a mile south of Toll Road in between US 395 and Toll Road. Although the address for the property is off of Cheryl Lane, the actual access for the property is likely to be off of Rocky Vista. And the easement that's really under consideration here tonight is the Big Smokey Drive easement, which I will detail more in the following slides. The subject property is a one-acre parcel zone, general rule, so it's an existing non-conforming lot. And it is surrounded on all three sides by the aforementioned government patent easements of 33 feet in width. Here's an aerial view of the subject site. As you can see there, Cheryl Lane's on the far west side, Rocky Vista and Big Smokey over to the west there. The location of the easement is along the southern boundary of the property, as shown in the aerial photo there. And then here is a graphic of those blanket 33-foot access easements along just about every parcel line within the vicinity. And this was common practice in areas where there wasn't, you know, organized subdivision process going on and where the road network was uncertain. There was this blanket easement granted. Here is the site plan provided by the applicant in their application, and the intent of this is to illustrate the amount of constraints that the existing easement poses for the property. Looking at this north is actually to the right side of the graphic, and in the green there is, they're depicting the current allowable building footprint. And then if the easement were to be reduced, they would have the additional area to the left there in the yellow. They are proposing to build a modest 1,400-square-foot house and a detached garage, and approval of the abandonment would enable that. Regarding the merits of the request, NRS does allow the Planning Commission to vacate easements if the public will not be materially injured. In this instance, staff believes that is the case. There will not be any injury to the surrounding property should this be approved. No adjacent properties would be negatively affected. It would really only affect the subject property. Surrounding properties do have alternative access to include the BLM property, directly abutting this property to the east or to the west, which I'll get into a little bit more detail. And the full width of this easement is currently not being used, and it's really only just creating an encumbrance. It's an unimproved area, and there's no plans to improve it. The blanket easements in this area are essentially no longer necessary as the road network has largely been established by partial maps and subsequent development. As I mentioned, access to the adjacent land will be perpetuated. The applicant's requesting a partial abandonment for this reason. The partial abandonment will retain 15 feet of the existing 33-foot access, and combined with an existing easement directly to the south of this property, the remaining access width would still be 48 feet even with approval of this request. In addition, the request to go to 15 feet of remaining access width will enable the applicant to measure their structure setbacks from the parcel line instead of the edge of the easement. At present, the required 30-foot front yard setback is being measured from the edge of the 33-foot easement, which creates a total of a 63-foot setback from the parcel line. If the abandonment's approved, they will just have to do the 30-foot setback from the parcel line. So here's a graphic illustrating all of that. The two yellow lines are the two existing 33-foot easements on each side of the property line. The red line is the 18-foot reduction to the remainder 15 feet, and then between the red line and the yellow line is the total width of what will remain should it be approved. To the east on the left, or the west, sorry, which is the left side as I'm looking at this graphic, is our two large BLM properties, and you can see there's an existing access easement, unimproved road going into that area. That will not be affected by this abandonment, and access would be perpetuated again by that 48-foot remaining width. There are also, in addition to that, other access points into those two BLM parcels, which are more or less islands surrounded by private development. Here are the reviewing agencies that were sent a copy of the application, all of the standard agencies, with the addition of the Bureau of Land Management. Only two of those agencies provided comments or conditions of approval, and they're basically standard conditions from engineering and the Planning and Building Department. Noticing requirements for abandonments, we're required to notice only those properties which would be affected by the abandonment. So in this case, that's not very many properties. Staff selected the properties along Big Smokey there, and then also, of course, the BLM properties. The South Truckee Meadows Washoe Valley Cab was provided a copy of the application. Staff did not receive any comment from the cab. There was actually, these are going to start going to cabs now, and this was actually scheduled for the cab meeting, but the meeting was postponed due to weather. No public comments from the general public have been received, and legal notice was provided as required by code in the Gazette Journal. Planning Commission is required to make three specific findings for abandonments in order to approve an abandonment, consistency with the master plan, no detriment to the public, and existing easements that remain will be adequate or relocated. Staff is able to make all three of the required findings as detailed in the staff report on page eight. And staff is recommending approval of this abandonment request. In staff's opinion, this is a classic abandonment request and is a good example of why the process is available to affect the property owners. It's a possible motion for your consideration, and I'm available to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you. Questions from the board? Commissioner Heran.
Chad, just a clarification. You mentioned on that when you put up the site plan, which is page 5 of 10 on your staff report, that that was submitted and prepared by the applicant. Just to confirm that you and staff is in agreement with that site plan, they have no issues with that?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Yes.
Other questions from the board? Do we have any public comment on this? We do not. Thank you. So I'll close the public hearing and bring it back to the board for consideration.
Madam Chair.
Commissioner Doncic.
I move that after giving reasoned consideration to the information contained in the staff report and information received during the public hearing, the Washoe County Planning Commission approve, with conditions included as Exhibit A in the staff report, abandonment case number WAB 18-0001, Cheryl Lane, for Del Rorick and Nancy Foster, having made all three findings in accordance with Washoe County Code Section 110.806.20.
I'll second.
Is there a further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. We're now to item 8B. Mr. Lloyd?
This is regulatory zone amendment, case number WRZA 18-0003, for possible action hearing and discussion to recommend approval of or deny an amendment to the Tahoe Regulatory Zone map, changing the regulatory zone from medium-density suburban, MDS 3 units per acre, to low-density suburban, LDS 1 unit per acre, on two properties located at 1131 and 1135 Lake Shore Boulevard. And representing planning and building is Planner Eva Kraus.
Okay. Do we have disclosures by commissioners, either ethics or ex parte communications?
Madam Chair.
Commissioner Heran.
As an abundance of caution, I am a trustee of the General Improvement District at Incline Village. This falls within. The General Improvement District does not have any land use authority, and any utility permissions, et cetera, et cetera, would be dealt by staff, which I would have no impact on, and will certainly not affect my ability to hear the hearing.
Mr. Edwards?
Commissioner Heran, I think what I'm hearing is you don't have any pecuniary interests or commitments in a private capacity regarding this, is that right?
No, I do not.
Yeah, I don't hear what you're saying to rise to the level of something that would require your disqualification or recusal. But thank you for the disclosure.
Thank you. Any other disclosures? Okay. I'll open the public hearing. Thank you.
Good evening, Commissioners. Eva Kraus, Planner with the Washoe County Community Services Department. Again, this is a request to amend, or to rezone two properties in the Incline Village area. They are lake shore lots and, let's see, here we go. Both properties, okay, basically zoning regulates minimum lot size setbacks and uses. Both, one, the MDS zoning on the one-acre parcels currently allows three units per acre, but that would be a subdivision of land to do that. LDS allows one unit per acre. TRPA allows one unit per parcel. Doesn't matter on the size. TRPA regulations prohibit the creation of new parcels, so the existing lots could not be subdivided. And it also limits uses in each plan area statement. Okay. Both TRPA and Washoe County allow detached accessory dwellings, and that's pretty much what this request boils down to. In medium-density suburban, you can have an 800-square-foot accessory dwelling unit, but you have to use a special use permit. On an LDS property, you would be allowed a 1,500-square-foot dwelling unit with an administrative permit. Under TRPA codes, you can't have an accessory dwelling unit unless you have at least an acre. So both parcels in this case are over an acre, and the applicant would like to be allowed to have that 1,500-square-foot detached accessory dwelling. So that is why they are requesting this rezone. This is, on the left is the existing zoning. As you can see, the properties in the dark pink are MDS zones. The properties to the southeast side of that are already LDS. So basically, we're moving the boundary between MDS and LDS over to lots. All the other lots to the east, or the west of the property are already smaller anyhow. So this is more in keeping with the abutting lots to the properties to the south. There was a public notice sent to 76 property owners, that's how many we hit, within 750 feet of the property. One adjoining property owner called to ask questions, basically the guy to the southeast. He is a property that is LDS, and now this property abutting him will be LDS too if this amendment is approved. So he didn't have any concerns about it at that point. It was sent to the Incline Village Crystal Bay Cab on March 5th. They did have some discussion, I outlined the discussion in your staff reports, that was recommended for approval 5 to 1. It was sent to the normal reviewing agencies. On a rezone, we cannot condition a rezone. Once you've rezoned it, you now have a property that has the allowed uses by that zoning. The difference between LDS and MDS zoning is dog kennels and some agricultural uses, but TRPA doesn't allow those uses in this area. So even though we say you can do that, TRPA would deny it. So there really isn't any change in allowable land use by changing the zoning. So there are, there are seven conditions, findings to be made. The seventh one is if there is a military facility in the area, it would have, had it been not affected, there are no military facilities. So the commission only needs to make the first six findings, and those are spelled out in your staff report. I'd be happy to discuss any of those with you if you have questions on them. So staff is recommending approval of this regulatory zone amendment. If you have any questions, I'm here to answer.
Thank you. Questions from Commissioners? Do we have any public comment on this item?
No public comment.
Okay. I will close public comment and bring it back to the board for consideration. Thank you very much.
Madam Chair.
Commissioner Chesney.
Are you prepared for a motion?
I am.
I move that after giving reasoned consideration to the information contained in the staff report and information received during the public hearing, the Planning Commission recommends adoption of the proposed regulatory zone amendment, case number WRZA 18-0003, and proposed Tahoe Regulatory Zone map, having made all of the following findings in accordance with the Washoe County Code, Section 110.821.15. I, oh no, this 15. I further move to certify the resolution and proposed regulatory zone map as attached to the staff report for submission to the Washoe County Board of County Commissioners and to authorize the Chair to sign the resolution on behalf of the Planning Commission.
Is there a second?
Madam Chair, I second.
Thank you. It was moved by Commissioner Chesney, seconded by Commissioner Doncic. Is there any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you very much. We're now at item C, 8C. Mr. Lloyd?
Okay. This is special use permit, case number WSUP 18-0003, U-Haul of Spanish Springs, for possible action, hearing, and discussion to approve a special use permit allowing for the rental of U-Haul vehicles and trailers from the subject property. This use type is classified as automotive sales and rentals, which requires a special use permit in the industrial regulatory zone in Spanish Springs for the Spanish Springs Area Plan Table C3. The use is proposed as part of a larger mini-storage and vehicle-storage facility, which are allowed uses on the property and not part of the special use permit. Here to present this proposed request is Senior Planner Kelly Mullen. And before you get started, for Kelly and anyone else speaking at the podium, please speak directly into the mic, as this needs to be recorded by a recording secretary for the minutes. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any disclosures by Commissioners, ethics or ex parte?
I've driven by it specifically because it was part of tonight's consideration.
Okay.
Not just accidentally.
Okay. You're okay there. Any other disclosures? Thank you. Ms. Mullen?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Good evening, Members of the Commission. I'm Kelly Mullen with Washoe County. The U-Haul of Spanish Springs project is located at the northwest corner of Pyramid Highway and Shawnee River Road. That is located within the Spanish Springs Business Park. It is located on three parcels that total 20 acres, and all of those parcels are zoned industrial. Just a quick overview of the request. The applicant, U-Haul of Spanish Springs, is going to be constructing a larger mini-storage and vehicle-storage facility on the site. Those uses are allowed by right in Spanish Springs on industrial property. However, as part of the larger facility, they are requesting to be able to allow the rental of U-Haul trailers and vehicles from the site. That particular use does require a special use permit in industrial in Spanish Springs, which is why we're here this evening. But I do want to reiterate that the remainder of the uses on the site, the rest of the facility, is not part of this review. So this is an overview of the three parcels, the 20 acres. That's all highlighted in blue, the project site. And the portion of the site that would be reserved for the equipment staging and display of those rental vehicles, that's highlighted in yellow on the screen. Access to the property would be from Digital Court to the north, although the project does back up to Shawnee River Road and is next to Pyramid Highway, access would not be from either of those roadways. This is a close-up of that same map that you just saw, again, showing that display parking area and the equipment staging area for the rental vehicles. And the business portion of those operations, the actual leasing, would be handled in the business offices, which would be located in the main structure for the facility, which is shown on the lower half of the screen. So a few details about what's proposed for this project. The site was designed to accommodate up to 60 U-Haul rental vehicles and up to 40 rental trailers on the site. Hours of operation, proposed hours of operation are shown on the screen. Again, that access to the project would be from Digital Court. This property is relatively level. There are not level. There are not, there is not much vegetation on site. One of the recommended conditions of approval, and was also proposed by the applicant, was that there be no exterior loudspeakers on site. And this project, the entire project, would be subject to the Business Park Design Guidelines that are found in the Spanish Springs Area Plan appendices. This is an aerial photo of the three properties. As you can see, there is some development nearby in the industrial park. There is some residential and rural development across the highway to the east. And again, that main access would be from the north off of Digital Court, which intersects with Ingenuity and Pyramid Highway. This shows the zoning makeup of the area. Again, within the business park, you can see all of those parcels are zoned industrial. There is neighborhood commercial zoning on vacant land across the highway to the northeast, and the Donovan Ranch subdivision, and some additional residential and rural zoning is to the east across the highway. The rental portion, the vehicle rental portion of the site that's going to be located closer, is proposed to be located closer to Digital Court. That's several hundred feet away from Pyramid Highway and would be partially screened and buffered from the mini storage facility that is on site. This is a photo showing the subject parcel standing at the end of Digital Court looking southeast towards Pyramid Highway. Similar shot standing at the end of Digital Court but looking south towards Shawnee River. Public notice for the hearing this evening was provided in accordance with all of our Development Code regulations. This item was scheduled for the Spanish Springs March Citizen Advisory Board, but that meeting wound up being canceled, so it was not heard there. But we did request any comments and concerns from Citizen Advisory Board members, did not receive any, and did not receive any comments from the public as well. Staff does believe that the required findings shown on the screen can be made to support this project. We are recommending approval with the conditions that were listed in the staff report. And if you agree with that recommendation, a possible motion is displayed for you on the screen. With that, I'd like to conclude my presentation. I'm available for any questions, and there are also representatives from U-Haul available this evening as well. Thank you.
Questions for staff? Commissioner Bruce, and then Commissioner Haran.
I have a question, and I'm not sure, is this, is the applicant related to the mini storage that was, because they did U-Haul rentals there at one point, and I don't know if they're not still doing them.
I'm sorry, Commissioner Bruce, can you speak into the microphone, please?
I need to lean forward and speak into the microphone.
Commissioner, thank you, thank you for your question and asking about if this particular project applicant is related to, I believe you said, other U-Haul?
Well, the mini storage that, where digital intersects with Ingenuity across the street, basically, did at one time rent U-Hauls, and you could drop off and order one there.
And, and thank you for the, thank you for the question. I am not aware of the relationship with, with this particular applicant and the mini storage that's nearby. I will leave that for the applicant to address if you don't mind.
Okay.
Thank you.
Do we have an applicant that can address that question? Thank you.
Please identify yourself for the record, please.
Good evening. My name is David Pollak. I'm the Development Manager for American Real Estate, which is the parent company to U-Haul International. And my address is 2727 North Central Avenue in Phoenix, Arizona. Also with me tonight is Chris Pedra, who is our company president, local company president here. And Chris, go ahead.
Good evening Commissioners. My name is Chris Pedra. My address is 10400 South Virginia Street in Reno. If I may, I can answer Commissioner Bruce's question.
Please do.
Yes, they are no longer a dealer. They were a dealer of ours about two years ago. And so they haven't actually rented U-Haul equipment for approximately two years. So to answer your question, no, there is no relationship at all.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Haran?
This is more for Kelly. Is there screening required on this where we have all the vehicles parked and everything?
Commissioner, thank you for the question. So there will be requirement, there is a requirement in the Spanish Springs Area Plan for buffering from Pyramid Highway, landscape buffering included. There are some design guidelines that will come into play as well for this particular use that we're looking at tonight in terms of the vehicle rental. We don't have a specific requirement for additional screening, and one has not been provided in the conditions of approval.
The vehicles, the rental trailers, those are closer to digital. They're not closer to. So I was more concerned about whatever screening might be provided around the digital areas opposed to Pyramid Highway. Because if you look at the U-Haul rental operations of different places, you know, that gets to be kind of messy from time to time because of how, just how it's dealt with. I was wondering about whether there would be any screening to protect that from the digital side.
And to the, to the west and to the north along Digital Court, that is all interior to the business park. It's surrounded by other industrial properties. Screening between industrial properties is not something that our code requires. Certainly, if there was residential use that was adjacent, we would have significant screening requirements, but that is not something that has been proposed in the conditions of approval before you this evening.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Other questions from Commissioners? Okay, do we have any public comment on this?
No public comment.
I believe the applicant would like to make a-
Oh, I'm, okay, I'm sorry. Thank you. I'm just moving us along.
I'm eager to be here tonight, okay? I'm going to change my presentation because I'm hearing a few things I think are important to understand, who we are and what we're doing. For most of you, again, David Pollak and Planning Commission, I want to thank you for allowing me to come forward. I do want to thank Kelly from staff, working with us real closely in being able to put this application together. I think a few things we should clarify. U-Haul, we think of it as an American icon. We're celebrating our 73rd year. And with a business that's been sustainable for that long and going to be around for years to come, we need to adapt to changing times. And the changing times relate to screening, how we control the operations, who we are. So a couple of quick items. When Commissioner Bruce mentioned about the adjacent property and that they were renting, understand, this is a corporate-owned facility. It will be run by the corp, by the company. We will employ anywhere from 10 to 15 people, all right? We are our own business, and the other, and there are about 1,800 of these around the country. Now, what took place at the adjacent property was called a dealership, is what Chris was saying. That is the foundation of how the company started in 1945. What they are, is they are businesses who come to us and say, hey, we want to make a little more money. Can we take your product and offer it? We say, okay. Now, we do have rights to control what they do, but they're not U-Haul per se, okay? So there are going to be two businesses that are going to be there. As it relates to screening, and I appreciate you allowing me to open the door for this, we today have changed the word of renting to equipment sharing. Why? Well, we find in our sustainability program, it allows us to remove some of the large vehicles from the street that you and I and our family might be able to use. It also helps in reducing carbon emissions. But in doing so, we have heard over the years, the complaints about our equipment, our trailers, just haphazardly being parked all throughout the center. That's why there's an area called the staging area, the shunting area. Any and all equipment that is being used for rental or sharing has to be in those lines. When they're brought back, they're put in the lines. So there won't be that look of equipment everywhere. Doesn't happen. He's responsible, his team is responsible to stay on program, and program is very important, so that we can eliminate what we hear with that. So tonight, in order to develop this property, and we're very excited about it, it will be the sixth, sixth U-Haul facility, sixth U-Haul-owned facility in the area, we need your support and approval for the SUP for the equipment sharing. And at this time, if you have any questions, I'm here to answer them, both Chris and I. Thank you.
Any further questions? Have we received any public comment?
I have one other-
Okay, Commissioner Bruce, and then-
And that is-
Speak into your microphone, please.
Since the rental trucks require fuel, what is your plan for fuel storage?
We, if I understand the question correctly, we don't store fuel on site. When our customers rent the vehicle, they are instructed to replace the gas that they use during the rental, if they're returning it to that location, meaning it's a local rental within the neighborhood. So it's going to be a boom for the Chevron station on the corner, I can tell you that. But we don't, as a, as a, as a rule, we do not store fuel on site.
Okay. Thank you.
Sure.
No public comment.
Okay, thank you. I will close public comment once again and bring it back to the board for consideration.
Madam Chair?
Go ahead.
Commissioner Chesney.
Do we, can we, I would just like to make a comment.
Okay.
This is the ideal use of the industrial property in Spanish Springs. Unlike some things that have been brought before us in the past, this is the perfect store, or the perfect scenario for the correct use of the industrial property in the industrial area in Spanish Springs. And I commend the applicant and staff on doing an excellent job of putting this together.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Doncheck?
It's time for a motion.
Yes.
Madam Chair, I move that after giving reasoned consideration to the information contained in the staff report and information received during the public hearing, the Washoe County Planning Commission approved with conditions special use permit case number WSUP 18-0003 for U-Haul, having made all five findings in accordance with Washoe County Code, Section 110 dot 810 dot 30.
Second.
Moved by Commissioner Doncheck and seconded by Commissioner Chesney. Any discussion?
I second Mr. Chesney's earlier comments about the utilization.
Okay, thank you. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. And thank you.
Thank you, Kelly.
We're now at item 8D. Mr. Lloyd?
This is tentative subdivision map case number WTM 18-003 for Valley Vista, for possible action, hearing, and discussion to approve a tentative map to allow the subdivision of a 15.33 acre property into a 75 lot common open space development. The overall density of the project would be 4.9 dwelling units per acre. And representing Washoe County Planning and Building is Julie Olander.
Thank you. Any disclosures by Commissioners, either ethics or ex parte communication?
I drove by this, looking at it again.
Okay, thank you. I'll open the public hearing.
Good evening. Julie Olander with Building and Planning. Tonight, we have a tentative map for Valley Vista. This is located in the Sun Valley area off of East Fourth Street. Some of you might remember this from a few months ago. It was brought before you. We asked, there was a zoning map amendment to it from medium density suburban. And just to also remind you, in 2011, it had been approved with a special use permit for a manufactured home park. On February 6th, you approved the zoning map amendment to high density suburban, and the Board of County Commissioners also approved it on the 27th of March. The application is now, the applicant is now requesting a subdivision on the 15 acres into a 75 lot common open space development. The site will be developed similar to what was approved in 2011 as a gated community for manufactured homes on the 75 lots, and they'll range from about 4,000 square feet to over, a little over 6,000 square feet. And that's on a total of eight point acres, 8.08 acres. The other seven acres or so will include the private streets, an RV storage area, guest parking, a community garden, and a path that'll go around the development and then open space. Here's a site plan. You can see at the top, there's the little area where the garden is. The common area is around the development. They have changed the emergency exit to Getford. It was previously going to go off of Pearl, which is up to the north part of the property. I'm sorry, well, the top of the page, which would be the east side of the property. The RV storage is right at the entrance, which is right off of Fourth Street. I've highlighted the path going around the development. Also, Lupin is the street that's bordering the west side of the property. Currently, it is an undeveloped road. We've worked with the applicant, and we're proposing to have that road abandoned after the, after this process. So you'll see this area again. And that area will then be abandoned to either the property owners to the west, portion to the west, and then a portion to this development, depending on how that abandonment goes forward. That area will then be incorporated into the common area. Some of the site characteristics are to, primarily the surrounding areas are zoned medium density. There is open space to the south. The, as you can see on the map, there's a portion that is in the FEMA floodplain. Property is primarily flat and vacant, is totally vacant. There is a bit of a slope. Here's a picture of it. This is looking from Getford, looking north. So there's a little bit of slope to the property. Sun Valley General Improvement District, the GID, will provide water and sewer to the development. The applicant did look at the traffic and access to the property, and it fell below the 80 peak hour rate and did not require a traffic study. The schools involved out there are Sun Valley Elementary, Sparks Middle School, and HUG High School. Those are the schools that the children would be, would be zoned to. Currently, the elementary school is over capacity. The middle and high school are under capacity. There is a new middle school plan for the area, as you might remember, that's come before you, I believe. And then that will eliminate the overcrowding at the elementary school, because the sixth graders will then be moved to the middle school. There was a combined presentation for the zoning map amendment and this tentative map application that was presented on February 1st at a neighborhood meeting by the applicant. And then also, it was presented at the Sun Valley Cab on February 5th. Both meetings were well attended. The cab voted four to one not to provide comments, I mean, to provide comments, and no recommendation was offered. I think we've gone through the comments from the previous zoning map amendment. I've listed them here, both for and supporting, and then there were a variety of different concerns also. 12 out of the 18 agencies or departments did review the application, and that information is provided on page eight of my staff report. There were no recommendations for denial. The properties, 500, the properties were noticed that were 500 feet from the site, and that was a total of 122 parcels. Some of the conditions of interest I wanted to highlight included the, we worked with the applicant, they are going to put a bus stop area along Fourth Street in front of the development. Sidewalks will be constructed on Fourth Street. There is a detention basin that will be constructed adjacent to the LDS church. Also, a minimum five-foot wide drainage unit will be provided between the existing homes and the development along the eastern boundary. And then again, Lupin Drive will be abandoned, and that, the property that is abandoned into the development will be incorporated in the common area. And there has been one addition to the conditions that were presented to you. It's Condition T, and it's concerning the Homeowners Association definition. We've added this definition, so there's a better understanding of what that exactly means in the conditions. Staff was able to make all 10 of the required findings, and that's on page 11 and 12 of your staff report, and staff recommends approval. And here is a possible motion, and I'm available for any questions. And the applicant is also here.
Commissioners, questions for staff? Commissioner Haran?
Was there any particular reason why the emergency gate was moved?
So Pearl is an undeveloped road right now. It's just gravel. And staff was wanting to have a, our code requires if it's a temporary emergence, I mean, a permanent emergency- I mean, a permanent emergency exit, that it needs to be on a paved road. Getford is paved already, so this would be more beneficial for the applicant or easier for the applicant to use Getford instead of Pearl. They will put, um, there will be improvements on Pearl for their, um, um, for their, um, infrastructure. They'll use Pearl to access onto Fourth for sewer and water. But that will just be then covered up again with, um, the gravel that's required to be put on Pearl.
Thank you.
Commissioner Lawson?
Uh, Madam Chair. Julie, uh, there was mention of the traffic report having been reviewed by the applicant and a determination made that it didn't meet the threshold of 80 peak hour trips. Did staff review that traffic report and derive, derive the same conclusion?
Yes, it didn't, it, there's not, just the, the project does not generate the traffic that didn't meet that 80 peak hour.
To make a change.
So we're, um, and that's the requirement of it. It meets, it goes over 80, um, peak hours, then there is a traffic study required. But in the situation, it was not.
Who made that determination, Julie? That's what I'm not understanding.
I believe it was Paul Salehagi.
Okay, and how long ago was that?
I might refer that to the applicant to have him answer that.
So we could have the applicant and identify yourself for the record, please?
Yes, for the record, Dave Snellgrove. I'm the Planning and Right-of-Way Manager at CFA. Paul Salehagi had previously done traffic report about seven years ago with the original project, and then updated that traffic, or it was a traffic letter for the mobile home park, and then updated that when we were going to the subdivision within the last couple of months.
Okay, thank you.
Other questions from commissioners?
I have a question.
Commissioner Bruce?
Uh, my question is, is that it seems that it's a given that everybody's gonna agree to abandoning Lupin down to Getford. Why is that? I mean, I don't know. I'm just asking, why would that be a given? Why would you do that?
So Commissioner Bruce, this, um, Julie Olander with Planning. I, the direction that engineering, engineering department has looked at that roadway, and I don't see, there, there's not the connectivity. Maybe I'll go back to where it's at. Well, I'm sorry, I don't have a really good map. The, it comes, it, I don't know. Maybe better. Okay, you could sort of see Lupin along the, um, the western boundary on this, on this map. So Lupin currently dead ends into Fourth Street. Fourth Street is a signalized, um, intersection at, at Sun Valley. So currently, most traffic will come down Lupin and then turn onto Fourth and go to the signalized light. When you go down, if Lupin was to continue you to Getford, Getford is a, um, just a stop sign. And then if you keep on going down Lupin, you can't, maybe I'll go back up. It's, it's sort of, it sort of, um, circles around down into the, um, the houses that are south of this development. So staff was, um, we, we reviewed to see the, this viability of Lupin being paved and the need for it in that area if it would really alleviate the traffic, help out with traffic in that area. Staff came to the conclusion that there was not, it just wasn't as viable. And the cost of improving Lupin was pretty significant, as you can see in this one, um... Oops, I'm going the wrong way. I'm still going the wrong way. Sorry. You can see where Lupin is, right here. It's that dirt road there. So to improve that would have been pretty costly for the applicant to do. So we talked with staff, and we came to the conclusion because it wasn't a real viable road in the sense of using, of alleviating traffic in the area, of moving traffic in a different madam, matter, ma, map, in a different way than it is currently, that staff was acceptable to abandon it. The reason we want to abandon it is that it allevi, it removes it from, the right-of-way is removed from Washoe County's responsibility. And at this point, then, the property becomes, as, as the, all abandonments do, that we, it's, at this point, it would make sense to have the developer take that portion of property on. If they, if this, it doesn't go into this development... I'm not doing well with my maps. There are, um, the properties on this map, you can see there's, um, some houses to the west. All of the, all, um, I think there's five of them there. Six properties there are all owned by the same property owner. So those six property owners will be approached when the abandonment application is moved forward. And then the larger parcel to the south, that applicant will also be approached. And that will be done by the applicant of this, the same applicant that you're, that's here before you tonight. So that'll be their responsibility to move forward with that abandonment. Does that answer your questions? Or are there still more?
I think that'll...
That'll help?
Help.
Okay.
Other questions from the commission? Do we have an applicant presentation?
Actually, if you could leave this up for just a second, and I'll follow up on, on some of the comments. One of the things about Lupin, um, we were requested to take a look at it, uh, by the, again, for the record, Dave Snellgrove with CFA. Um, we were requested to take a look at this and, um, by the county staff. They didn't feel that Lupin really provided a beneficial connection. And one thing I want to point out is up in that northwestern corner of the site, you can see that a little under a quarter of, of the Lupin connection would be in the 100-year floodplain. I know the northern portions of Lupin are also in that, north of, north of Fourth Avenue. However, those have been there. They've been there for quite some time, but this would be creating a new road that actually falls within the 100-year floodplain and may have flood inundation. So with that, do you have my presentation? Well, we were, we were here with you a couple of months ago and at your February meeting, and that was the, uh, Regulatory Zone Amendment request. That time, we identified very clearly what our intentions were. If you recall, some of the discussions relative to the Regulatory Zone Amendment were that it would allow more than five dwelling units per acre. We're actually at 4.9 dwelling units per acre. And we stated at that meeting, our intention is, we have 75 units in a mobile home park. The intention is to come back and have 75 single-family lots. So we're following this approval process that had previously been approved as a mobile home park. We've gone through the Regulatory Zone Amendment, and that was just unanimously approved by the county commission. And today, we're here before you with the follow-up to what we said we would be doing and bringing back a tentative map that by and large matches what, what the mobile home park layout was, with some modifications relative to the condition, or the comments that came out from the neighborhood meetings that we had. And I'll cover that briefly as we go through the presentation. So previously, we had a mobile home park with 75 spaces. Proposed, we have a manufactured home subdivision with 75 lots. Locationally, located up in the Sun Valley area, Sun Valley Boulevard. We are on East Fourth Avenue, which is, as Julie Olander had, had noted, a signalized intersection. It's also identified by Washoe County in the Sun Valley area plan as a collector's status road. And our property is located right there. The Mormon church was built up in the northeast corner. Eight years ago? Eight years ago, plus or minus. We are in the L-shaped property surrounding that to the west and to the south. So previously, we had, and this was the approved mobile home park design, had 75 units. It was gated community. Common area surrounding the community, pedestrian path system looping the community. And the special use permit was approved. Our layout that we have now, those didn't go in the right order. It's a proposal for a common open space tentative map. It's the 75 lots again. It's a gated community, common area surrounding the community, pedestrian path again, looping the, looping the community. Common open space tentative map approval, or, kind of, open space tentative map, and we are requesting your approval this evening. So side by side, the before and after, you can see, uh, the general makeup, the layout. Some of the differences that you'll see in here down on the south end and over on the east end, which are situated appropriately north to south and what you're seeing. There are some additional parking pockets and parking spaces in the community. Try and make sure, that was one of the comments that came out from the neighborhood meetings, was that if the, if people can't park within here, that Fourth Avenue would become a parking lot. We took that seriously and incorporated those into the, into the design to try and make sure that we did not create that, that type of situation. 75 before and 75 after. So there's no additional density that's requested with this common open space tentative map. We'd covered before, and Mr. Prue is back with me this evening. He is the project applicant. And I'll go ahead and try and do his portion of the presentation. Definitely not as long, but cover the basis for you. The mobile home park, what you have is a chattel loan. It's basically on a personal property. It's like getting a loan on a, on an RV or something like that. The land is actually real property, so, uh, the personal property comes with it a higher loan rate and additional costs for the property owner. With the subdivision, it opens up the opportunity for FHA and VHA financing. From two months ago, Mr. Prue had, I think, three pages of different companies that offer FHA and VA financing. One of them was, that always stood out to me, and I thought was kind of humorous and interesting, was Costco. So there's a wide array of companies that can offer this, and they do come at a lower rate and generally a lower down payment. The chattel loan comes typically with a 20-plus or minus percent down payment. There's a shorter term on it and higher interest rates. The FHA/VA loans, those are on the real property, which is what we're trying to get this property to. Zero to three and a half percent down payment, longer terms, up to 30 years, and lower interest rates. Looking at the, uh, Sun Valley Area Plan maps, the properties identified in the suburban character management area, you can see it with the red star on there, as are all the properties surrounding it. This is generally the same map that I had, stand from Julie's presentation. This is the development suitability map. The white portions are identified as the most suitable for development. The portion that we have that's, that's impacted is really up there at the northwestern corner of the site, and it's in association with the floodplain. We'll go back into view of a couple of the maps, and I want to identify that we don't have any development proposed in that area. And also, if Lupin is to be abandoned, that that would remain as common area per condition of approval. I mentioned briefly before, and I think this map's important relative to, to general traffic and appropriate locations for the access. The street and highway system plan from the Sun Valley Area Plan identifies East Fourth Avenue to be a collector's status road, identifying that that should be carrying more traffic than some of your local streets. And that is where our access does come out to, from the project. They're just to the western side of the Mormon church. So this is one of the project maps. Apologize, north is, uh, north is to the left. When you're looking at this now, it's turned sideways. So the floodplain area is actually down at the bottom left-hand corner of this map. Want to point out and illustrate to you that that's that area floodplain, and we are keeping the development entirely out of the areas that were identified to be within the 100-year floodplain. This map identifies the pedestrian path system. It's over a sixth of an acre, or a sixth of an acre, six of a mile, looping the, looping the site through the common area. And it does go in and utilize the sidewalks there, as it kind of goes closer to the Mormon church on those parcels near the Mormon church. This is just a copy of the, of the site plan. You can see the parking, additional parking spaces that we have shown in here. And this, this plan is the grading and drainage plan. To the left side, you can see parking spaces right next to the Mormon church. And just to the right of that, there's a long area. That is our detention area, which there had not been a detention or retention area previously provided in the mobile home park. I think one, one would have been required, but we've tried to size this appropriately so that it can handle as much water as possible because flooding was a big concern that was brought up, uh, by the residents when we met with them. This is our landscape plan. By and large, this shows the landscaping along the trail areas. It doesn't show the street trees that are required within the project, but this illustrates some of that perimeter planting. Ms. Olander had identified that we had neighborhood meetings. We did conduct one individually We did conduct one individually at the Baptist Church directly across the street from the site. That was on February first. And then on February fifth, we were at the Sun Valley Citizens Advisory Board. Through those meetings, and Ms. Olander had comments that were identified and concerns that were identified in her staff report and presentation about flooding, traffic, and public safety, and I want to, I want to highlight on that is one of the concerns that came out was that schoolchildren, while they're waiting for the bus, will stand on the side of the street, and right behind them is a drainage ditch. And it, it's not a real protected situation, which was the origination and, and the thought behind putting a bus stop pad there by our sidewalk. It would be up in the northwestern corner of the site, that that could become an alternative school bus stop location, because then you'd have the curbing for protection and then a little bit bigger area so the kids aren't standing right, right at the edge of the street. They will have a five-foot sidewalk, which is required per condition, and then a little bit bigger area relative to that bus stop pad. Lighting, it is required that we minimize lighting and use, use and meet dark skies, dark skies lighting standards. There was overcrowding. Ms. Olander hit, hit on the issue of the schools, that there are changes coming, with new schools coming on. The only one that is overcrowded right now, and it's marginal, is the Sun Valley Middle, or Sun Valley Elementary School. But there is a remedy coming for that with the middle school taking in sixth graders. We did have a condition added and discussed this with Mr. Lloyd and with Ms. Olander regarding the eastern properties, and they have water that runs onto this property, and they were concerned about that. The neighbors were concerned about that coming on and didn't want to have to modify anything because the property slopes off. So we do have a requirement for an easement along the eastern side of the property to address that issue. Legal findings, I won't go through all of them, but, but I thought there were some that were really germane. And these really came about in the Housing Elements Goals and Policies. One, one was on goal one, removing regulatory barriers. While this is more of a direction to staff level, I think that through the zone change that was done a couple of months ago and finalized with county commission, that was one of the barriers that was removed to try and get this to something that can be as provided as an affordable housing project. Policy 1.2 from the Housing Element Goals and Policies identifies, evaluate the role of manufactured homes as an affordable housing option. We do feel that this project is indeed doing that. This will be a manufactured home subdivision. Encourage development at higher densities. In the medium-density suburban, it would have been forty-six lots. The mobile home park was approved at seventy-five lots, and we're trying to match that same density. We just had to go through kind of a long process in order to get there, and we do hope, hope for your support tonight. Promote residential densities in areas where services and infrastructure already exist. This is in fact the case. We are an infill site, and we do have sewer, water, electric, gas. That's all right around us. And development of vacant and underutilized properties, I do feel that this definitely meets that, meets that role. And promote homeownership as a community asset. I feel that my client and the applicant on this project, that's what he's trying to do, and kind of a little bit different way to go about it relative to how you can differentiate the loan amount, the loan amounts and payment amounts that people make by switching over from that chattel loan to FHA or VA. We do, Ms. Olander identified one condition addition. We do have one condition that we would like for, for you to consider changing. I'm going to go ahead, this is a portion where, where I eat a little bit of crow with my client. I have a lot of really delicious recipes if anybody needs any. But when, when I put this together, I'm typically used to working with garage parking. And what happens is a front to a garage, of the front yard distance to a garage, because you have a solid face, typically twenty feet, that provides for parking in front of the garage. Because we are providing carports, we're requesting that that be allowed to be shortened to fifteen feet. So the only area of change is down there on that bottom line, front to carport. We're proposing that that be fifteen feet. I have just very little time yet, but I know Mr. Prue has a couple of pictures from a project he's doing in Parampe that has the same type of treatment. They're actually going down to ten feet in that case, but the fifteen would allow for a car to park. They, they can still be out of the public right-of-way, or out of the right-of-way area and partially under the, under the carport. Or they could pull all the way into the carport, since we don't have that garage front that is the, is the problem. Darren, if you'd like to share the pictures. State your name for the record.
Darren Prue. So this is a photograph. I don't know if you can pop it up, am I in the right spot here? So this is a home, it doesn't quite portray it accurately, because this shows a very small setback. But it's this awning, this white awning right here where it connects to the home. It's currently would be an additional ten feet back, and we're, this is, has no feedback. It's just flush. In proper English, my mother would be embarrassed, dang it. But that's, we would like to change that so that it's a little closer to the front of the home. Any other questions? I'm available.
Thank you. Do we have questions for the applicant or questions for staff on this? Commissioner Haran.
I, I, I get that you want to shorten it from twenty feet to fifteen feet. I don't understand why that's a big deal to you right now.
At the back of this, you see the white awning there? That's the carport. At the back of that, there's storage that we provide, a little onsite storage area. We want to make sure there's enough room for two parking spots covered. And if we have to hold that front face here back an additional ten feet, we may have one car covered, and we may have a half of another car covered. I want to have both cars covered.
So you're talking about the top of the?
Correct, the awning.
Okay, I got it. Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
I'm a little slow in picking those up.
Got to see pictures.
Well, sometimes even the pictures have to be explained.
Other questions from commissioners? Do we have any public comment on this item?
We do. We have Garth Elliott.
Commissioners, for the record, Garth Elliott, forty-five, you're a resident of Sun Valley. I was on the cab when this came through several years ago, slightly different configuration. And I'm also on the Sun Valley Board of Directors, so I'll be selling them water and taking away their poo. So, and I won't make any comment about eating crow. Eat almost everything, but not crow. My concern with this development always been storage. Storage with Sun Valley is a, is a real problem. And they assured me that they will give this due, is due, try to encompass something to help people store. This has turned into a great product. I was very concerned about the product that they had before being personal property and the problems getting financed and everything else. It's morphed into a real good project with the advent of them turning it into real property so that we talk about some good loans. We desperately need this kind of a product in Sun Valley and in Washoe County. So I think if you give us your stamp of endorsement, it'd be a great thing. We definitely need this kind of a product. I think they really attempted to give us the product that we need. I'm not concerned about the density or anything else like that. I think it's going to be a good thing for Sun Valley when it comes to fruition. So thank you for your time.
Thank you. Do we have other public comment?
No further public comment.
If you would like to make public comment, you need, you can come up to the podium, and then you'd have to fill out a comment card. Yes. Identify yourself for the record, please.
My name's Harold Cummings, and I'm a resident of the Sun Valley. And I watch the kids get on and off the bus there at where they were showing the, where the kids, where the, the kids would be standing or the, the building would be. And my big thing, I always think about being in Sun Valley, you know, right next to Hobie's. The last couple of years, we all watched him put sidewalks in across the street there. And before, it was like everywhere else, dit, you know, the, the ditches. And if you drive a big truck like me, or you have a good-sized vehicle, when you drive through Sun Valley, especially at night, people walk in, there is no sidewalks, you know. And, and it's really easy to, to, unless you, you have, you've got good lighting. I just recently upgraded my lights on my truck because, because of that, there's more people now, and there is no place for people to walk. So this new thing that they're going to do here with, it's going to bring a lot more people and stuff in that. It's so, it sounds like a great idea. But being, I, I watch it all, you know, all through the year, the kids. And so many times you see them, you know, falling into the ditch. They, you know, they're running, they're playing, they, they end up in the ditch. There is no sidewalks. And if they did anything like that, you know, whether they're doing, doing these improvements, if they made sidewalks, part of it, it would, I think it'd make a big safety thing for, for the children and for people just walking around. And that's one of the things I wanted to think. And then also, you know, that overhang on that mobile, I guess, you're talking about two cars going in, going in depth-wise, I guess, that way. Because, you know, a truck's over twenty-foot long, length-wise. So, you know, ten foot's real short, but I guess that is talking about width, not depth. I'm, I got kind of confused, but I just wanted to mention that, that I have a truck. My truck's about twenty-two foot long, so I can't even get it in a garage, let alone, you know. But, but the big thing I wanted to just bring up was the, the sidewalks, because I do watch the kids all the time. And there is nowhere for them to go, and the more people we have there, the more condensed it is and the more traffic there is, and then they just get squished over into the ditch. Thank you.
Thank you. And don't forget to fill out a comment card, please. Any other public comment? I don't have any further cards, no. Okay. Close public, public comment and bring it back to the board. Commissioner Doncheck.
I believe to address the gentleman's concern with traffic, there is a plan to put, the development will have to put a sidewalk plan all the way down fourth where their property is. Sidewalks and curb and gutter will be, is part of that tentative plan.
Yes. I do have one question for staff. I believe in your, initially in your presentation, you talked about community garden space.
Julia Olander with Planning and Building. Yes, there is a corner up, it's up along, on the eastern side.
Near the church.
Up along.
That's, yes.
Okay, you're okay?
We, we do need your motion back up when that, because we do have some, just a couple of changes going on here. So thank you for that. I just endorse community garden space for healthy living for families, so that's a good thing.
So it's up there, and in, on the top of the page there, you can see it says garden.
Okay, thank you.
Julie?
Commissioner Chesney.
This change in the language, is it included in your, in your report?
So the only change I have in mind is for the addition of the homeowners association being defined. I have not the information about changing the length of the driveway to fifteen feet.
And condition I. And I asked staff, and I see that, Mr. Edward said Mr. Lloyd have been having a conversation, so. Thank you, Julie.
It, it is my understanding that with, with this type of subdivision request, which is a common open space subdivision, there are opportunities to modify certain standards such as setbacks. And, and my understanding, and this is the first that I, I've seen that request, typically we like to do it, have those addressed beforehand, before they come to the
Yes.
meeting. However, I, I think we, we, we can certainly accommodate such a request if it's up to certainly the Planning Commission's discretion. I would add that for, for structures such as carports, we do, we do have an allowance for a two-foot overhang into a setback. And so rather than a twenty-foot standard, it would be basically an eighteen-foot standard down to fifteen-foot standard.
Mr. Edwards.
Well, I'm taking a look at a couple of provisions regarding that question right now, but I also wanted to make some remarks about the lupin drive abandonment. Actually, Commissioner Bruce made, I think, a pretty good point about that. I don't think the condition is written to indicate that there is going to be an abandonment. It's just that they have to get it abandoned in order to record a final map. And I, I foresee some potential problems with that down the road. That is a discretionary approval. It may or may not be approved down the road, and this entire subdivision could potentially be derailed by the failure to fulfill that condition. So that's not to say you can't include that condition in there, but I think you might want to give some thought to changing it a little bit to something like the lupin drive right-of-way, or there's, they shall apply for an abandonment of the lupin drive right-of-way. At that point, it's out of their hands whether or not lupin drive gets abandoned. So, so in a sense, to put that on their shoulders to get it abandoned when it's not up to them whether it does is a potential problem.
And Mr. Edwards, where specifically are you looking at that? Is it under?
So I'm on Exhibit A, page nine of twelve.
Okay.
It's condition I.
Because condition I is the one that also deals with the setbacks, correct?
No, condition I deals with the lupin drive abandonment.
In staff report, he referred to condition I for setbacks.
This one is under traffic and roadway. The, the letters will repeat depending upon which department.
Okay, thank you. Okay, Mr. Edwards.
When I'm done looking at these provisions regarding the other question, I'll, I'll chime in.
Okay, I'll come back with you, and then we'll see if there's.
Madam Chair, I have a question for Mr..
Commissioner Chesney. He's looking at the books too, so.
I know, but, but this subdiv, you just made a comment that, that this subdivision could come off the rails if lupin drive isn't, isn't abandoned. Why is that? The way, the way I understood the proposition was that abandonment of lupin drive would be an asset to, to this, but not necessarily prohibitive of this thing going forward.
Right. Well, the condition as it's written right now under traffic and roadway says that
Shall be.
Shall be abandoned. It shall be abandoned prior to the recordation of the first final map. So before they can record a final, which, which is a precursor to any lot sales, they would have to get that abandoned, which would be out of their hands. If, and if you would like, Madam Chair, I mean, I can, I can propose a couple of
Thank you, Mr. Edwards. That would be very helpful.
Tweaks with that language.
If we could have the motion back up on the screen, please.
So Madam Chair, I don't know if perhaps you would like to write this down. It's pretty simple, what I'm going to propose.
Okay.
I would say for condition I, you could start it off with the developer shall apply for the abandonment of the lupin drive right-of-way. And then it would just pick up where it says, all the way up to the word site. Then delete, shall be abandoned. Yep, and then prior will be, you can leave prior, because then it will simply say they have to apply for the abandonment of that right-of-way prior to the recordation of the first final map. Now that, this is up to you, you as a commission. I'm just looking at something that I see as a potential, as a potential problem and a major snag on this project. So if, if the intent ultimately tonight is to approve this subdivision, and you've got people here that have said positive things about it, and, you know, if you decide to approve it and everyone's happy and walks out of the room, you know, in a celebratory, celebratory mood tonight, I would hate to see that come crashing down, you know, in two years because there's some problem with the abandonment at that point in time.
Yeah.
Commissioner Bruce.
I do have a question about that. I mean, that was bothering me. It bothers me that basically the abandonment of lupin versus approving this at this point seems to be getting the cart before the horse.
Yeah.
And I'm concerned about it. And, and I think that, and my question has to do with the fact, it's actually to you, Nathan, but with the other property owners, and I'm not saying they will, but if they object to the abandonment in the abandonment proceedings, might that throw a monkey wrench into the, the project?
If I may, I, I don't believe that would. The, the adjoining properties, it's my understanding, there's six or seven, and they're all under the same ownership, if I'm not mistaken. They have the, if they wish, they, they could accept half of, of that current right-of-way, or, or they could grant all of the right-of-way to the applicants. So that would be their decision. But, but the applicants would have to reach out to, to the property owner that owns those properties.
Is the, is it just one property owner?
So there's two property owners. Let me go back to that page. Oops. So there's the property owners to the north, those that are developed. Those are all owned by one property, I mean, one owner, all six of those parcels. And then the property to the, the larger property to the south is owned by another person. And I wanted to just explain a little bit more, the engineering department, when they were reviewing this, they felt like lupin needed to either be abandoned or developed. That this is an opportunity for us to have some action on that roadway that had not been, in a sense, has been an undeveloped road for a long time. So this was an opportunity for us to address that, that right-of-way, and what did, how did we want to look at that roadway in the future? So that's the reason we sort of connected it with this development, to have the opportunity to finally address it. The engineering department felt like this was a good opportunity to do that. And the conversation was that to, to pave the roadway was going to be pretty expensive because of the floodway up there. They probably would have had put a bridge in, and that would have been expensive for the developer to do when they're trying to make an affordable project, housing project. So the option, the other option was to abandon the right-of-way because of the lack of connectivity to the other roadways.
I'm not objecting to the abandonment. I'm just thinking, as I said, it seems that we might have the cart before the horse, and we have a loose end that may or may not work out the way that we assume it's going to work out, because you know what they say about assuming.
I can totally appreciate that, Commissioner Bruce. Thank you so much.
Commissioner Bruce, I do believe with the changes that Mr. Edwards is suggesting is that it will kind of make it so it, it won't be a hiccup later on, if I'm stating that correctly.
You are, and the point that Commissioner Bruce is raising is exactly what I'm, what I've attempted to deal with, with the change to that condition.
Probably can't read my writing. Okay, so before I move on to the other change of condition that the applicant just sprung on us this evening. And that's really not okay. So in traffic and roadway, item I, lupin drive, the applicant will, just so I'm making sure that I'm stating this correctly, the applicant will apply for the abandonment, abandonment of the right-of, right-of-way adjacent to the site prior to the recordation of the final map? Is that how you were stating that, Mr. Edwards?
Shall apply.
Or shall?
Yes, I was, I was stating it as a prefix to that entire condition that the developer shall apply for an abandonment of, and then it would start in with the lupin drive.
Right-of-way.
Right-of-way.
Okay.
And then up until the word site.
And then shall be abandoned.
Then shall be abandoned would be removed, and then it would pick up again with prior to.
Okay, thank you. Are all the commissioners clear on that?
Crystal. Oh, like mud.
Mr. Haranis, Commissioner Haranis, crystal clear. Okay, the other, on setbacks, that is.
Something different?
I had it here in my.
Damn it.
So that is on page five of 12, is that correct? Lot standards for the development for setbacks?
Julie Olander, Planning and Building, yes, it's Item I under Planning and Building, or Building and Planning.
So please indulge us and ask, let us know what you're asking for in this item to be changed.
Condition I, the only portion that is requested for change is that circle 20, that that would become the number 15. The front two carport would become 15 feet rather than 20. That is, that's our request. I do appreciate your indulgence.
Okay. Mr. Lloyd or Mr. Edwards?
I still need a minute. Mr. Lloyd and I are going over this.
Okay.
Thanks.
Madam Chair, so we're only talking about the top of the carport?
Yes.
Yes, just the covering.
The coverage, yes.
Just the covered way up here.
Mm-hmm.
It's going to be 15 feet instead of 20.
15 feet, yeah.
Just the top.
15 feet in property versus 20.
Not the sides.
Not the sides. As I understand it.
Well, wait a minute. If you're going to shrink it, how are you going to get two cars in?
No, 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 no.
No, no, no. The overhang-
So the overhang's going to stick out-
No.
Beyond the front of the unit?
If we could have the applicant's representative to describe that again while we're waiting for counsel and-
I know, but we're, the picture depicted.
Describing what the-
If we have side conversations, if I could minimize those for a moment, please.
To describe what the change is, the requested change is that in this last portion of the condition where it says "and" front of carport, that distance would be recognized as 15 feet if you accept what we're requesting.
From the setback.
What we have is a 10-foot setback to the front of the house, and the carport, the cover part of it, could start five feet back in what this would say. So it gives, you don't end up with the carport right adjacent to the front of the house.
Flushed with the house.
It's still a little bit back, but it's not all the way back to 20. And in planning, we kind of get hung up on and stuck on where the front of the garage door is. Well, because this is a carport, it doesn't have a garage door, so you can still pull in, you can have your car partially under, partially in the uncovered portion of the driveway. It provides more flexibility relative to what Mr. Prue is trying to accomplish.
So that canopy, that carport cover can stick out five feet beyond the face of-
Nope, it's the other way around. The front of the house is 10 feet from the street, carport has to be 15 feet from the street, so the carport will be farther back. With this change, it doesn't push the carport out in front of the house, it's still behind the front elevation of the house.
Hell of a time to bring this up.
Mr. Lloyd and Mr. Edward, can I propose like a five-minute recess?
Excellent.
Yes, you may.
Okay, we're at a five-minute recess. So then you're not in. We're talking about the setbacks. That's what we're discussing. The setbacks were-
This is, we get quite a snag here, didn't we?
The setbacks were just- Yeah, I think so. Going to go ahead and call this meeting back to order. Mr. Edwards, if you could give us a recap of your review, please.
So typically what happens with these common open space subdivisions is we have a conversation before the meeting about what variances might be included with the tentative map review, and then we will add those into the agenda description and be part of the noticing and things like that. So the only one that is being talked about tonight that is different than what's been put out there or, and/or was not put in at all, is the 20-foot, which is the standard setback, being reduced to the 15 feet. So my recommendation tonight is to either go forward as a planning commission with what they've submitted and what's in front of you tonight on that issue, because that would be a variance, or if they're amenable to it, continue it and come back in a month. I don't know how important that provision is to them in terms of the layout of the neighborhood and things like that. So those would be my recommendations. You're free to ignore my recommendations.
We shan't be doing that, Mr. Edwards.
For the record, Dave Snellgrove, I have talked to the applicant on the project and apologized for causing so much turmoil over five feet, but it's what it is. Fact of the matter is, we would like to move forward this evening. We did have a discussion with staff that there may be some ways to work with minor deviation, it gets part of the way there, and we can work with staff on that, that's administrative level. I don't think it would get us all the way there, but we would prefer to move forward with the project so that Mr. Prue and his group can continue to move forward on their final map.
So to be clear, then on Item I on page five of 12, there will be no change, that the carport set will be 20 feet?
That would be correct.
Okay.
And if I may offer this, the applicant has the opportunity at a future date to bring back an amendment of conditions request that would be properly noticed and would come back before this board.
Do we have any other public comment before I close it and bring it back to the board for consideration?
None of which I'm aware.
Okay. Thank you, everyone, for your indulgence. I close the public comment and bring it back to the board. So what you have before you is, on page five of 12, Condition I remains the same. Mr. Edwards, on page nine of 12, has suggested the language, and Julie, you have written that down, if you could reread that. And then I believe your motion had something highlighted, correct? So you're going to read Condition I in Traffic and Roadway on page nine of 12.
Can I have the other part up?
And then adding the Homeowners Association, correct?
Yes. So the additional condition would be... Oh, dear. What's that, three?
What I'm asking-
Yeah, I just wanted to make sure we were on the, okay. Anyway, so the addition would be to change Item I to the applicant shall apply for an abandonment of Loop and Drive right of way adjacent to the site prior to the recordation of the first final map?
Yes.
And then the other item, the other condition that is already showing on the screen.
Okay. Does anyone want to make an attempt at this motion?
Just what she said.
Okay.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
I move that after giving reasoned consideration to the information contained in the staff report and information received during the public hearing, the Washoe County Planning Commission approve with the conditions included as Exhibit A, as modified during this discourse to this matter, and with the addition of the condition explaining the reference to a homeowners association, tentative subdivision map, case number WTM 18-003 for Land Bank Development Company, LLC, having made all 10 findings in accordance with Washoe County Code, Section 110, 0.608.25.
Madam Chair, I second.
Thank you. It's been moved by Commissioner Lawson and seconded by Commissioner Doncheck. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? Motion carries unanimously. We're now at Item E. Mr. Lloyd?
All right, this is Development Code Amendment, case number WDC 18-0002, for possible action hearing and discussion to initiate an amendment to the Washoe County Code, Chapter 110, within Article 302, allowed uses of Table 110-302-052. That's a table of uses, civic use types, specifying that private education will be allowed with a Board of Adjustment special use permit in all regulatory zones except industrial and open space, and that public education will be allowed in all regulatory zones except industrial and open space with no special use permit required, within Article 304, Use Classification System, Section 110-30420, civic use types, to add to the definition of education the subdefinitions of private education and public education, and for other matters necessarily connected therewith and pertaining thereto. If the proposed amendment is initiated, public hearing and further possible action to deny or recommend approval of the proposed amendment, and if approval is recommended, to authorize the chair to sign a resolution to that effect. And once again, representing Washoe County Planning and Building is Julie Olander.
Okay. Disclosures by Commissioners of Ethics Ex parte? Thank you, Ms. Olander.
Good evening again. Julie Olander with Building and Planning. This is a Development Code Amendment to add private and public education. To give you a little background, in 2013, Article 440 was created in response to Nevada State Bill AB, I guess Nevada State Bill, AB 87, which is, was an act to, to address the development of public schools in counties of over 10,000. Article 440 governs, and it was adopted at that time, Governor, Article 440 governs the development of any new public school building and/or addition or alteration. The initiative that we have before you is, what we have before you is an initiative and a request to amend the Development Code of Table 110-320-302.05.2 in Section 110-304.02. The proposed update to Table is to add the public and private education uses, and then in the other section is to add the public and private as a definition. So in, on Table 110-302.5, you have a list of education currently, and you can, it's hard to see here, but it is struck out in this, and it shows that in your staff report. What we're proposing to do is to strike out the S2, which stands for a special use permit, and to add underneath that private school facilities and public school facilities. The private school facilities will have the same requirements that currently are under education, and the public school facilities will be in allowed use, and that's what the A stands for, and that's what's shown in the highlighted yellow. Then in the other section, which provides the definition, we're going to add the private school facilities and the public school facility definition, and then we're also adding under education, just to clarify the concern about, that this does not refer to homeschooling of children who live on-site. There was an open house held on March 15th. The cabs and public were invited. There were no attendees, and no comments were made from the public. It was noticed in the Reno Gazette Journal for this hearing. Staff was able to make all four required findings, as shown on your staff report on page five, and recommends approval. And here is possible motion for the initiation and the amendment, and I'm available for questions.
Is there any questions for staff?
Madam Chair, yeah. Why are we treating private schools any differently than public schools?
So the original state law, AB 87, that differentiated between public and private. It spoke just to public schools. That was the only thing that that law originally addressed, and so Section 440 only addresses public schools, and so it doesn't address anything to do with private schools. So we recognize the need to separate them out.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Haran?
So the private. When you say private, that includes the charter schools, right?
So the charter schools are under Washoe County School District typically, so my understanding is they are included in the public school.
They're just going to include the public, because they're under title on coverage.
Other questions?
Let me just clarify, there any school that's collecting public funds? That's the definite, if I go back to that definition. So the differentiation is, public school facilities use type refers to educational services for the education of children of the community that are funded primarily with tax revenues. So that's the difference. It means, so private, they are not funded by tax revenues, and so anything that is receiving tax revenues for funding purposes, that would fall under the public school facilities.
And if I may, what Ms. Olander is presenting tonight is really a housecleaning, you know, requirement. This is, NRS governs in this situation, and our code needs to be consistent with state law, and simply that's what Ms. Olander is presenting tonight.
Do we have any, Mr. Commissioner Bruce?
I have a question, in that it appears that under education, a special use permit was required heretofore, and now we're separating out private school facilities and public school facilities, and opening the door for public schools facilities not requiring a special use permit. Is that correct, or am I mistaken?
So currently, we're working, as Mr. Lloyd indicated, right now we have Section 440, and that's how we are complying with NRS currently with 440, as he indicated, this is a housecleaning, this, these, the section, the, this table does not reflect what Section 440 speaks to, so this is to bring us into compliance with NRS to clean up this table, to make it so that under public schools, they are not required to have a special use permit, because that is what NRS now does, is how it states. They don't have to have a special use permit per NRS.
Thank you.
And that would be why, so for instance, the new charter school that is going up over on Mount Rose over by Wedge, that would not have come through any approval process at the county level?
Correct, Commissioner Haran. Currently, we, because of NRS and that law being passed, we do know, we no longer are allowed to have a special use permit requirement-
Thank you.
-for that use, for public schools.
Do we have any public comment on this?
No public comment.
Okay, so I'm closing the public hearing and bringing back to the board.
Madam Chair?
Commissioner Chesney.
Would you propose a motion? Or, no, I guess we're going to initiate this, right?
We're going to initiate, and then-
I'll give you that page for you, just for your-
And then you'll do the amendment as well.
Okay. I move that after giving reasoned consideration to the information contained in the staff report and received during the public hearing, the Washoe County Planning Commission initiate the amendment to the Washoe County Code, Chapter 110, Article 302 and 304, allowed uses and use classification system as described in the staff report for WDC 18-002. Do I need to read the amendment also?
Yes.
Okay. To amend, I move that after giving reasoned consideration to the information contained in the staff report and received during the public hearing, the Washoe County Planning Commission recommend approval of WDC 18-002. To amend, the Washoe County Code, Chapter 110, within Article 302 and 304, allowed uses and use classification system as described in the staff- as described in the staff report for this matter. I further move to authorize the Chair to sign the resolution contained in Exhibit A on behalf of the Planning Commission, and to direct the staff to present a report of this Commission's recommendation to the Washoe County Board of County Commissioners within 60 days of today's date. This recommendation for approval is based on all of the following four findings in accordance with the Washoe County Code, Section 110818.15E.
Madam Chair, I second.
Thank you. We have a motion moved by Commissioner Chesney and seconded by Commissioner Doncheck. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. We're now at item 8F. We'll wait for Mr. Lloyd to get out here. He's doing this... He's presenting on behalf of Mr. Pelham. So, you'll read it into the record, and then...
I'll try to do both, yes. Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the Commission. For the record, Trevor Lloyd with Planning and Building. And I am presenting tonight, in the absence of Roger Pelham. The poor guy has to spend the week in Hawaii, so... And I know...
Poor Roger.
All right, this is... I apologize. This is a Master Plan Amendment and Development Code Amendment, case numbers WMPA 180001 and WDC A180001. This is a amendment to... master... a request to... I'm sorry, let me read the full thing. Just for possible action and hearing and discussion to amend the Washoe County Master Plan, Volume 2, Sun Valley Area Plan, at policy SUN 1.2, to remove the sentence, "New single-family detached residential, including mobile homes, will not be allowed within the DCMA." If approved and subsequently found in conformance with the Truckee Meadows Regional Plan by the regional planning authorities, the Sun Valley Area Plan would no longer prohibit new single-family detached residential units in the Sun Valley DCMA. Because this is a possible amendment to the Master Plan, approval must be by resolution, supported by a two-thirds vote of the entire Planning Commission membership. And, Development Code Amendment, case number WDC A180001, for possible action, hearing and discussion to amend to Chapter 110 of the Washoe County Code, WCC at 11021835A, to remove neighborhood commercial office zoning from the areas in which mobile homes and manufactured homes are prohibited to be placed within the Sun Valley area. If approved, placement of mobile homes and manufactured homes within these zones would instead be subject to the general placement rules found in Table 110302051, which allows them with a Board of Adjustment Special Use Permit. And so, with that, I'll go ahead and start the presentation.
Just one moment.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Disclosures by Commissioners of Ethics or Ex parte Communication. Okay, thank you. Mr. Lloyd.
Okay, as mentioned earlier, this is a two-part request. It's a both a Master Plan Amendment and a Code Amendment, but essentially, to allow the same thing. And that is for residential detached, single-family residential units within the downtown character management area of the Sun Valley Area Plan. Currently, as I had mentioned, as a result of the 2010 Master Plan Amendment and Code Amendment changes, this downtown character management area, I'll call it the DCMA, prohibited single-family uses within that area. Again, it... this Code Amendment specifies that the neighborhood commercial regulatory zone, and we're only talking about that regulatory zone, the NC Neighborhood Commercial, would allow for single-family detached units, but with approval of a special use permit. So, on the overhead, this shows the downtown character or commercial management area of Sun Valley. And so, that's basically what we're limited to looking at tonight, that specific area. As part of that character management area, there are many...
Trevor, Madam Chair?
Yes.
Can I ask a question? Where does that stretch to, from where to where? That Sun Valley Boulevard, where does it stretch from to where?
Down at the bottom, I believe that is... if it's not at, it's close to First Avenue, all the way up to, I believe, it's just past Seventh Avenue.
Okay, thank you.
And again, part of that DCMA, there's many existing residential units. Many of them are about third acre in size. Several vacant, empty lots that currently cannot place new manufactured homes on those properties. Right now, many of the property owners cannot improve their properties because of these restrictions. And nearly all of the other area plans allow for residential detached, single-family units within the NC zones. We currently... we regularly have staff meetings, and staff brings up necessary Code Amendments. We have a long, long list of necessary Code Amendments that need to be done. This particular Code Amendment and Master Plan Amendment rose to the very top, and it was unanimous by all of the staff that this was a necessary need. Primarily because, staff, we work with the community. We work on the front counter. We get regular requests by property owners to improve their properties, to place... to take off old manufactured homes and to place new ones on the site. Currently, what you have is a situation where some of these homes are getting old. Those properties are getting blighted, and with no opportunity to clean up these properties and to clean up this part of Sun Valley. This is a necessary require... or a necessary amendment in order to help these property owners to relieve a current problem. What I've done is, I've shown on this overhead, it's turned at an angle. So, if you look at the far right, where that bright green property is, that's heading north. What you see with this is a significant amount of commercial zoning. All of the red properties, as well as the purple properties, are all zoned commercial. The red properties are general commercial, and the purple properties are neighborhood commercial. And that represents a large part of that downtown commercial management area. What you also find is that this... when this amendment went through back in 2010, it was well-intended. However, it had unintended consequences. And many of those consequences were just this, that these property owners didn't have relief. They were... they're not able to place new manufactured homes or new single-family homes of any kind on any property that's zoned neighborhood commercial within this district. And so, what we have now is an oversurplus of commercial properties. There simply isn't enough population to support that many commercial properties. So, the request is simple. It... the first part of this request is to amend this policy of the area plan. And it's simply to strike that last sentence, where it says, "New single-family detached residential, including mobile homes, will not be allowed." Simply to remove that language from the area plan. And then, the second part of the request is it, within the Development Code, within Section 11021835A, placement standards. And that's to simply remove neighborhood commercial, the NC, from the list of regulatory zones that do not allow manufactured homes. So, really, it's a two-part request, and that's the second part of the request. Notice for this request was provided in accordance with code and statutory requirements. Because it's such a large area, we had to notice a total of over 1,200 different parcels. This item was heard by the Sun Valley Citizen Advisory Board, who met on February 5th. They voted unanimously to recommend that the current language stay in place. The CAB generally prefers commercial development along Sun Valley Boulevard. And I understand, for good reason. We cannot require landscaping and those kind of improvements for residential properties, but we can for commercial. And so, there has been a lot of new commercial come into that... that's come into the Sun Valley. We require trails, sidewalks, and landscaping, consistent with Article 412. And again, we can't require that of residential. So, I do understand where the Citizen Advisory Board is coming from. However, staff is comfortable that we can make all of the necessary findings to support the Master Plan... the proposed Master Plan Amendment. Additionally, staff is comfortable that we can make all of the necessary findings to support the Code Amendment. And with that, staff offers the following two motions. I'll go back to the Master Plan and leave that one up for a while. With that, I can answer any of your questions at this time.
Is there questions from Commissioners for Staff at this point, before I open it up to public comment? Okay, we'll begin with public comment.
We have Ron Bell, followed by Garth Elliott.
Any other people wishing to speak must fill out a comment card, please.
Good evening, Ron Bell. I'm probably a poster child for this scenario. And I appreciate the honor to speak here. I own 109 Grumpy. You'll see that... pardon me for the bad picture there. That's what used to be there, was a manufactured home. And the idea was real simple. Take an old one off, put a new one on, improve the area. Well, that didn't quite work out. You can see now, it is a vacant lot, and I'm stuck, like a lot of homeowners, in this dilemma. So, you know, there's a scenario where, as Lloyd mentioned, many people go to improve or take an old one off. This was dilapidated, cars everywhere. I mean, I'm still removing cars and trash off this lot all the time. This has been ongoing for years. I've been making payments on this lot, paying my taxes. So, again, I'm the poster child. And many people all along Grumpy are in this same scenario, as well as that area that you've seen. I think what the cab didn't realize is that, sure, everybody... they want to improve Sun Valley Boulevard, which is going to be tough in the era of Amazon and online shopping these days anyhow. They didn't realize, in my opinion, that many of these are a block or two away from Sun Valley. As you see here, I'm not on Sun Valley Boulevard. I'm back a block and surrounded by manufactured homes. So, just wanted to kind of show up and, you know, again, hopefully get this thing through once and for all, and, you know, get a nice new manufactured home there, and help this area improve as well. Also, I want to mention, I passed out earlier, you probably saw him. I even know Don Ellis. He was a property owner in this area for many years, and he owns a lot of mortgages in this area. He wanted me to present this letter to you. He, of course, is for it. He owns many properties on Grumpy Lane, as well as all throughout Sun Valley, and has carried many, many people their mortgages and has rented to low-income folks all throughout Sun Valley, pretty much for the last 40 years. So, I appreciate the honor, and thank you very much.
Thank you. Garth Elliott, followed by Carmen Ortiz.
For the record, Garth Elliott. I am representing the Area Plan Update Group that met for at least five years. Five years. We did it twice. We did the update, and we were told, oh, sorry, we got to... Washoe County doesn't do it that way anymore. We got to do it again. And that was at least eight years ago. I've got some overheads here. See how we get...
Turn it... you're upside down.
Upside down for us.
Huh?
Turn it flipping. There you go.
Are they getting closer?
Yes.
Yeah, it looks good. Unintended consequences, that's the theme for tonight. And yes, there were several. We reverted Sun Valley Boulevard back the way it used to be for many, for many, many, many years. It was changed by, actually, I heard by one of our Commissioners, she wanted to make some additional, well, whatever. We worked for five years. We gave the opportunity for five years for the public to come in and say, hey, this is not going to work for me. That never happened. We were never... no one ever came and said, this is going to be a problem for me. Bill Whitney worked with us for the five years. One of the lead people with the county. Never once did there would be any issues. Never once said that there'd be people that wouldn't be able to do what they wanted to on a property. Never once talked to us. Now, words spoken about unintended consequences. We wanted to improve Sun Valley. This is on the northern end here. One of the properties. You've got a... this is one of the better ones. This is not going to work with my attention deficit, but this is one of the lanes, I think, the gentleman was talking about. We've got a lane that butts right up to Sun Valley Boulevard. You didn't know we had a boat works in Sun Valley. We do.
Twist it around.
That's a land yard.
There you go.
There you go.
Right on Sun Valley Boulevard now. No. No, we don't want anybody's property along Sun Valley to look like this. We can fix this, maybe with some code enforcement. But this is what we got now. We don't have... we don't have what we wanted, things like...
Turn it upside down.
Yeah, like you said. My attention deficit and my low blood sugar are really getting me. Dollar generals moved in. Dollar trees moved in. Lots and lots of commercials moved into Sun Valley Boulevard. Great thing. We said, give us some more time. We never intended to have the problem with someone wanting to improve their third acre by putting a bigger home in. We didn't know anything about this. Apparently, that's a fluke of the law. They can't put a big double-wide or brand-new home in where an old piece of whatever was there before. We're saying, leave it alone. Don't mess with our five years of work to improve Sun Valley. And that's what you'll be doing. There's some big problems, yes. Unintended consequences. Let's figure something else out. Let's not revert back to where it used to be. Again, there's, I think...
I need you to wrap it up, Mr. ...
Pardon?
I need you to wrap it up, Mr. ...
I'm trying. I'm talking for 10 people here.
But the rules were changed, that it's still three minutes for all public comment.
Anyhow, let's not undo what we did, please. Figure out something else besides... So, I'm basically saying, don't change it back. Thank you.
Carmen Ortiz, followed by Harold Cummings.
Hi, my name is Carmen Ortiz. I'm with the Sun Valley Citizen Advisory Board. So, I wasn't here when you guys... or when we had that DCMA zoning original brainstorming process. But what I remember from the February 5th meeting, the Citizen Advisory Board in Sun Valley, was, number one, they want the ability to replace and fix existing mobile homes on Sun Valley Boulevard. And as a Sun Valley resident, I'm all for that. But what they don't want are any new manufactured... any new homes going in on Sun Valley Boulevard. We want to keep that commercial. We are not concerned about the two rows back. The parcels that are not touching Sun Valley Boulevard, we don't care if they put new homes on those. We're only concerned with the ones that actually face Sun Valley Boulevard. So, we want Mr. Bell on Grumpy Lane to be able to put a new unit on that, or to fix the existing unit, whatever. So, from what I understand, the language was there originally, but it fell out somehow. So, if we could get that language back to preserve the downtown character management area only on specifically Sun Valley Boulevard. And the parcels behind that, by all means, we want them to have housing. And to be... every place that had a house on Sun Valley Boulevard should be... should be grandfathered in and be able to put a new one in. But if they can't prove they had one there, then, you know, I don't think they should meet that, but that's my two cents. Thank you.
Thank you.
Harold Cummings.
Thank you so much for letting me talk. I just wanted to, when we were looking up at the screen, my wife and I were just wondering, we're, I think, like a lot of people, all in favor of improving Sun Valley Boulevard. I was, I seen one of the numbers there, 750 feet. I was wondering if that was in depth wise, or how deep it would go, would be 750 feet? Is that, they were, you know, from the Boulevard, I was wondering if that, how deep it would go. And then, the nice gentleman was talking about, had the picture of the boat. I wanted, you know, we have airplanes and trees around there, too, that you just can't, I don't have a picture of it, but you would want to see it anyway. It's just ridiculous to see, much like the boat. But one thing I wanted to bring up, and I talked to a couple, just mentioned it to a couple of nice gentlemen on break, is one thing that I don't think people, I haven't heard anybody really mention, maybe it's just going to be in there anyway when they do all this building and all this, because we're going to have more people, right? There's going to be more people, more business, more traffic, and, and with that, the streets are small, and again, the sidewalks. But one thing I wanted to bring up is that it's really big when you live there, and anybody would agree with me, there's no lighting. On Sun Valley Boulevard, there's, there's good lights, you know, pretty good, but when you get off the main street, there is no lighting. I mean, you can walk down a street and it's pitch black. There, you'll look down and a block away, you'll see a light, a lamp, it's kind of dull. I mean, there's, there's very little lighting throughout the area, especially east of the Boulevard. And I live on that side, but it's just so dark. And again, if, you know, big vehicles, there's no sidewalks, and even if there was sidewalks, with all the improvements and stuff that they're talking about making, I think lighting should be something that people should think about, you know, just light posts with lamps or, you know, so that you can see, but that's all. But thank you.
Thank you.
And no further public comment.
Is there anyone else in the audience that's wishing to make comment? If not, I'm closing public comment and bringing it back to the board. Mr. Lloyd, if I may. From your presentation and from what I have read, please substantiate what I believe this is. This is to clean up language that has, has not been present, that has, has created this blight situation in the sense that the, if someone tries to remove an existing home and replace it with something better, they cannot do that.
Thank you. Thank you for the opportunity to clarify or elaborate on that issue. What you have is a situation where those homes that are zoned neighborhood commercial, most of them are historically been residentially zoned. And now there are, there's a situation where there are many homes, many of which are fairly small, you may have single wides or just small units. They're grandfathered non-conforming uses. What that means is that if that property owner that owns that home, they want to replace it with something, they would have to replace it with something that is like-sized, very similar in size. They cannot replace it with a larger unit, and that becomes problematic because many, you just can't find newer homes that are the same size. And so it really restricts their ability to improve their property at this time. So we're not talking about a wholesale change, we're not talking about a change in the zoning, a change in the overall policies of that, of that DCMA. We're simply allowing, we're providing relief to property owners who have essentially been begging for it for, for the last several years. So that really, hopefully that clarified.
So, again, for clarification, it was grandfathered in as a non-conforming when this area plan was first proposed, and that commercial area was created on Sun Valley Boulevard. So these situations with the pictures that were presented to us in public comment this evening, which are properties that are facing Sun Valley Boulevard, that area is, that's a non-conformance, that's out of compliance, that's a code violation. So what I'm trying to get at is, you know, and then we're asking, well, people that are not adjacent, I mean, not sitting on Sun Valley, they can do whatever they want, but that's not what's before us tonight. It's creating this situation that allows for compliant use.
It is allowing for them to bring those properties back into conformance.
Conformance, yes.
And that's exactly what, what this does tonight, yes.
Okay. Commissioner Doncheck, and I'm just going to come down the line.
Okay. Just maybe one or two points. First point is, so you're talking about grandfather. So, just for my clarification, so anybody that's had a home on a piece of property can, you're looking towards allowing them to make a change and put a home back on there. What if somebody owns one of these pieces of property that's never had a home on it? You're saying they would still not be allowed to? It's only those that's had a home before?
No, let me clarify that. Currently, as the way the current master plan and code read, if you have a property that is zoned neighborhood commercial, if it's vacant currently, you cannot put a home on it.
Okay, thank you.
The, the change would allow you to place a home with a special use permit on that, on that vacant piece of property. If I could go back, can I pull that up? There was something I wanted to mention, and one of, one of the homeowners, one of the property owners mentioned it. Many of those properties aren't just along Sun Valley Boulevard. Some cases, they're three or even four properties back. I don't know that those properties will ever be developed commercially, and so to restrict them, to take away their opportunity to place a home or, or remove an existing home and place a bigger home on that property, it really, it seems like it's a violation of property rights.
That was my second question, knowing how far back this coverage is for the, for the...
It's quite a ways back, yeah. And so the intent, again, it was a good intent back in the day to, to, to remove some of the blighted properties and place more, you know, newer commercial-type properties, but what we've discovered over the last eight years now is, it, it has worked in some cases, but in others, it really hasn't, so.
Commissioner Lawson.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Trevor, it seems to me that, that this is an attempt to provide relief, but at a, at a great cost to the concerns of the cab. And so, was, did you consider redrawing the DMCA boundary so that the, the properties that weren't abutting in Sun Valley were excluded from that particular zoning, rather than change the entire commercial plan?
Yes, and let me answer that, and that's an excellent question. We, no, we don't, we didn't want to do a wholesale change, and what you're talking about would be more of a wholesale change. At some point, we, we do want to come back, we do want to revisit all of those issues. What we're talking about is providing immediate relief, something that, that is basically low-hanging fruit, where those, those, the zoning isn't changing, though all of the current opportunities are still there. However, we wanted to provide relief to these, these property owners who've basically been held hostage over, because of this, this master plan, because of the current development code. We wanted to provide them the relief. Now, what we're anticipating is that following the upcoming update to the regional plan, we want to reopen all of our area plans, and certainly, this is one of them, and we can look at, we can go back, do a visioning workshop with the community, with the cab, and take a look at all of these issues, see what policies work, what, what don't work. Yeah, we'll open up that whole thing. That was never the intent of what, what we're looking at tonight. Tonight, we just want to address that, that one issue.
Thank you, that's, that helps me understand, and it's been a difficult night for understanding. So, with, with consideration to the cab recommendation, I'm, I'm not seeing, I really appreciate your, your attempt to provide relief to the property owners, and I, and I support that. And I, but I'd like to try to find a way to do that without contaminating the intent of the, of the people that work so hard to try to develop a structure wherein that their community looks like they want it to. So, I'm not, I'm, I'm just thinking, I was trying to see a way to compromise and provide both, but, but it sounds like you guys have spent a lot of time on this. Can you help me?
Again, and I don't...
How do we protect the cab?
Right, and, and I tried to answer that, and I'll, maybe I'll try again as better, I'll try to clarify what, what I said earlier. And that is, we do want to address all of those issues, but not with this process. We wanted this to be a simple process where we're simply looking at relief for the current property owners who come to us on a very frequent basis, begging, saying, please, is there anything that we can do? Well, this was the simplest way forward. It, it's not going to address all of the cab's concerns, I understand that, but that is something that we can do. Again, as, as we go forward, as, as regional plan is adopted, then we're going to open up the area plans and take a look at them. We want to do a wholesale change at some point to, to bring in community, bring in the cab, bring in all of these different stakeholders, and really address these issues, right? See what, discuss the issues that have worked and what haven't worked. But what we're proposing tonight, it, it's not going to invalidate all of the work that's been, you know, all of the work that the, these folks have put into this. It simply is one avenue to allow for relief from property owners. It still requires a special use permit, right? And so in that instance, we still get to look and see what the effects are, what the impacts are going to be with everybody that wants to put a house on, on these NC properties. So I hope that answers the question.
It did, thank you.
Commissioner Hare.
Didn't we have one of these several months ago on a one-off basis? My only concern on this is, is that, that, you know, there's unintended consequences of what we have, there's going to be unintended consequences if we implement this. I think that, that, you know, a broader brush approach to it might be better.
Commissioner Chesney.
Yeah, I, I can kind of echo the, the concerns of my fellow Commissioners in the case of the land yacht that I drive by almost on a daily basis, and the blighted properties there. I, in my heart of hearts, don't believe that this is going to eliminate those, that sort of, I mean, those, those are enforcement issues, literally. But, and I understand that once you get off, off the frontage of Sun Valley Boulevard, those folks should be able to, to replace whatever they want to do, put in new ones, put in bigger ones, whatever fits their property. But on, on the face of Sun Valley Boulevard, it is, in many, many areas, it's totally blighted, and I, I, I just, I don't believe that this is going to fix that. And that's all I have to say.
Mr. Edwards, I do have a question in terms of with, with planning staff trying to do some corrective action, can this be construed as a takings for the property owners that were removing housing that was either unlivable or degraded to a point and then wanting to replace it and then could not?
Well, it's not that they can't, it's that there's limitations on what they can replace it with. And I have the non-conforming structure article open, which is 904, and, and generally, it's a 10% rule. That's a common rule of thumb throughout zoning ordinances and land use ordinances. And 10%, if you, if you change the size by 10% or increase it by 10%, you're not allowed to do that with a non-conforming use. And so what Mr. Lloyd is, is getting at is that some of these older homes that are on there were, were manufactured in an era when they were made a lot smaller, and now they're much more commonly larger by more than 10%. And so they're in a conundrum of trying to find something that fits, but I don't think it's likely that it's a taking because there are avenues that are available for people in those circumstances, they just have limitations on them to deal with those situations. Mr. Lloyd, in, in talking about the, the issues along with the frontage on Sun Valley Boulevard, and Mr. Lloyd can correct me if I'm understanding this wrong, but on that point, Madam Chair, the, the placement in the neighborhood commercial zone of a new detached single-family would require a special use permit if this is approved, am I right? So the, some of the issues at least that are coming up, which I think are valid issues, because there is some back and forth here between the master plan, the vision statement, and the, and the rights of some of these individual lot owners, but the fact that it's a special use permit rather than just a building permit means that there's an opportunity to condition the placement of new residential that does abut Sun Valley Boulevard. So, for example, you know, there can be screening conditions and things like that, that, that could at least partially deal with some of the, the issues that are, that are coming up. So I think that was an important consideration as well, based on what Mr. Lloyd was discussing.
So, thank you for that, because what we're, what is before us tonight is to either approve or deny these changes, but irrespective of that, a special use permit is still required for everything.
Yes, that, that is correct. That, it defaults back to the code requirement for the NC zone.
So what's before this commission is the corrective language that allows for this, so homeowners are not held in limbo, but recognizing that special use permits, which is not before us this evening, is still prevails. Commissioner Bruce.
I'm, I basically feel like this is operating with a meat cleaver rather than a scalpel. And I also find that all actions have an equal and opposite reaction in physics, and the law of unintended consequences means that we didn't get the results we wanted. Now, you're saying that we've got revisions to the master plans, et cetera, et cetera. Do we have a, an oncoming light showing us when it's going to get here, approximately?
I apologize, when what's going to get here?
The revisions to the master plans, the, the replanning.
The update.
For Washoe County Planning Amendment.
Yes.
Right. We don't have a timeframe. We anticipate that regional, the regional update will probably take place sometime in 2019. It's been, it's been delayed a bit. We, we hope that it happens soon. Following that, we anticipate that we'll get to, we, we hope to get to the area plan updates immediately after the regional plan is updated, so we anticipate that that's going to happen sometime in 2019. We won't be, you know, and all of them will be based on a priority, so we won't, we won't open all of them up at the same time, so that may take several years. I think what I'm getting at is, it could take two, three years to provide, if, if we wait for an update to the area plan, to the Sun Valley area plan, in the meantime, all of these property owners are basically held hostage versus addressing this one issue, this one need now, and then we can still address all of those other issues that, that, that the, that the community can, through, through visioning workshops, through, through a series of these meetings with the cabs and that, we can address all of the other issues. But we don't want to hold, hold up, you know, hold those property owners hostage in the meantime. That's what I'm saying. And this, we, we do feel that this is using a scalpel. We're not by any means using a meter. Can you clear?
Thank you.
Commissioner Barnes.
Yeah, I don't really have a problem with this, so, you know.
Thank you. Any other comments before? I guess I do have one comment. In terms of whether or not we approve or deny tonight, what, what troubles me is that the, when this area plan was written and the input of the community was brought forth, they wanted this commercial zone to clean up the appearance of Sun Valley as people come into the valley. And, and that was why they asked for that neighborhood commercial, thinking that commercial properties would, would maintain an appearance and keep things clean. But when we see pictures like what were presented to us tonight of, of what appears to be obvious violations, so in terms of, I know that's not what's before us tonight, but it, it, this isn't, this is a problem, that enforcement is not taking place of what is currently zoned there. Would that, am I on point? Would that, am I on point?
I don't necessarily want to speak for our code enforcement, but it's my understanding that much of what you saw in that one picture, there's very little that code enforcement can do. All of that has taken place over the last several years with that, the current language that we have in place, you know, that's, that's part of our, those are the policies that we have. We have the ability to screen certain violations such as inoperable vehicles. My understanding is we don't have the authority to tell him, he's got to clean up that boat, for example. That's unfortunate, but we don't have that authority. The code enforcement doesn't. Some of the other, you know, the other, I'm not familiar with, with that property. I don't know what violations there are. There certainly may be violations on that property. I just don't know. But a lot of that you'll, you'll find is, in fact, not a violation of county code, like it or not.
Okay. All right. Thank you. So, then, in terms of when we start rewriting these area plans, then it would be a strong recommendation to the community that writes these, to put that kind of language, enforcement language, within their area plan?
That is, yeah, absolutely, things that we can explore with the update to the area plan.
Okay. Thank you. So, we'll have one more pause?
No, go ahead.
Okay. All right. So, we're at a point of a motion for approval or denial. As in, as you know, you have a master plan amendment, and I would suggest that we handle these as, depending on how, what the flavor of the commission is, is that there's a vote on the master plan amendment and then a vote on the development code amendment. I'll wait to hear that from, after Nate's done talking with Trevor, but to see if we handle them as separate motions or can join them.
Well, if one doesn't go, the other one can't go.
It can't, right.
Or if we, let's see, if we don't, if you don't have two-thirds.
We don't, and we have to have two-thirds. Mr. Lloyd, or no, Mr. Edwards. Was there a conversation for us or?
No.
No? Okay.
Guess it was a private conversation.
Okay. So, since this is a development code amendment, it does require two-thirds vote for passage or denial, correct? So, it's two-thirds either way?
For passage.
For passage, for approval.
If, I'm not, I'm looking at Mr. Edwards here. I believe that's for the master plan amendment only, right?
Master plan amendment only.
For the master plan amendment, yes. Two-thirds.
But if we don't pass the master plan amendment, then there's no point in taking up the development code amendment. One is conditioned upon the other. Is, if, is that correct?
Well, they are separate. Let me go back to the language of both, if I can.
Okay.
Okay. This is the language for the code amendment. And really, this is speaking to the allowance for manufactured homes within that regulatory zone.
With the special use permit.
With, right, which is required by code. The master plan amendment, however, talks about any new single-family detached residential that could be stick-built homes, that could be manufactured homes. So, they are a little different, so I wanted to point that out.
So, this is about as clear as mud. So, we could, just for sake of conversation, we could approve the master plan and deny the development code, or vice versa.
Or vice versa. Correct.
Or approve both or deny both.
So, now, I have a question, Madam Chair. May I, please? I'm starting to understand some of this. So, Trevor, if we deny the master plan amendment and approve the allowance of commercial homes, does that solve our property owner's problem?
No, it does not.
Why not?
Because if you look at the master plan.
Master plan amendment allows for the, putting the manufactured home. The development code amendment, if we approve that, removes the commercial zoning, correct? The neighborhood commercial.
Not entirely.
That's what I'm reading, right here.
I apologize. What the master plan amendment does is it removes the language that says you cannot have a detached residence on an NC property, regardless of if it's manufactured or not.
Okay.
Right? The code amendment says you, basically, the development code right now says you can't have a manufactured home in the NC zone in Sun Valley. So, it's, there is a slight distinction between the two. But you would need to approve both to provide relief.
For the homeowners.
For the homeowners.
Are we still in discussion here?
Yes, we are.
Okay. Here's my read on it. As long as he's requiring a special use permit, that anybody that, and I'm very, very concerned about the frontage on Sun Valley Boulevard, very concerned about. If somebody wants to improve or develop the land on Sun Valley Boulevard and the conditional use permit, and it goes through that process, will require screening to protect the visual effects facing Sun Valley Boulevard, I don't have a problem with it. But we can't control what's going to happen in that special use permit process because the, will that come, will that come before us?
No.
Or will it go, BZA?
Board of Adjustment, yeah.
Correct. Board of Adjustment.
I thought I heard that we couldn't, when I had a screening question a little while ago, that we couldn't condition the screening on residential. Somebody said that.
You have more authority, not, not you, because you're the planning commission, but the Board of Adjustment would, would have some, some flexibility in imposing conditions if there were concerns about possible screening.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah.
If they don't, if they, if they don't require any of that, that's an unintended consequence of our passing.
That's right.
We're at the point of, we do need a motion to either approve or deny. And you have two motions in your packet, one for approval and one for denial, on both the master plan and the development, master plan amendment and the development code amendment.
And if you look at it to deny, you have to find, what's it say, to deny, you have to be unable to make three of the six findings. You have to actually find three of these six findings that we don't.
If we're going, if we're, yes.
If somebody moves to deny. You can't just say you have.
Mr. Edwards, is that your interpret, is she correct in her interpretation? Is Commissioner Doncheck correct in her interpretation?
Under the master plan amendment. So, my, so my position on that is, I understand what Commissioner Doncheck is saying. My, my position on it is if you can't make all the findings you need to make in order to pass it, then you can't pass it.
That's under.
And you need a vote of five of you to pass the master plan amendment.
And then, Commissioner Doncheck, what you're referring to is that, and deny them being unable to make three of the six findings, so of their, we would have to, we were unable to find, in accordance, three of those.
Correct. And under development code, we have to make at least one of the findings.
Yes.
Unable to make one out of the four.
So, the question was on denial, though. So, for approval, you have to be able to make, the findings you have to make are at least three of the six to approve. If you can't make at least three of the six, then you can, then you deny.
Correct.
Madam Chair, for the, for the purpose of simplification, if it requires four of us to, to vote in favor, well, if it requires four of us to vote in favor of a denial, but it only takes two of us to vote against an approval, I'm just going to, I'm probably going to vote against this, but I'm going to move to approve. Can I, Mr. Edwards, can I vote against it and move to approve?
You are not required to vote in favor of your motion.
Good. So, for the sake of simplification, I'm going to move to approve. So, Madam Chair, if I might.
If I may, Commissioner. Mr. Edwards, what I asked a bit ago is do we take these as separate motions or do we join them?
You can do either one.
Okay. Thank you.
I would like to make a suggestion.
Speak into your microphones.
I would like to make a suggestion that the commissioner not make a motion, because in the motion, it requires that he say that he finds the, these things to be true, and let someone who does find them to be true say that.
Thank you.
So, ladies and gentlemen, I am back at the position.
That's a fair point. I will say he is still free to do that.
I'm not arguing.
Yeah. Totally fair point. Typically, after a motion and a second, there's, it's open to discussion. So theoretically, during that discussion, the movement can say, you know what, I don't, I don't support my own motion.
Or if there is no motion, then there is no action, right?
If there is no motion.
It dies.
It dies for lack of motion. Is that correct, Mr. Edwards? If we take no action.
Yeah, I would encourage you to make a motion to deny. If you're going to deny it, just deny it. And if you're going to approve it, approve it. And that's, that's what I would say.
Don't take no action.
Madam Chair, may I, please?
Yes, please.
I move that after giving reasoned consideration to the information contained in the staff report and information received during the public hearing, the Washoe County Planning Commission not adopt the resolution contained at attachment aid to the staff report to amend. The master plan is set forth in the master plan amendment case numbered WMPA 18-001 and deny the amendment request being unable to make three of the six findings of fact in accordance with Washoe County Code Section 110.820.15D.
Second the motion.
So, there's been moved by Commissioner Lawson and seconded by Commissioner Bruce to deny the master plan amendment? Any discussion? Commissioner Hare.
I'm going to support the motion to deny. The reason I'm going to support it is that I don't think it's our place, or my place, and I will not speak for the rest of the commissioners, to revise and implement a master plan, development plan that's been put together over a period of time by the community. I just don't see it as my place to do that.
Any other comments? So, all in favor of denial, and then we will have to have a vote count to ensure that we have the two-thirds of the master plan amendment case number WP, WMPA 18-0001.
You don't need two-thirds for the denial, only for the approval.
Okay. Okay. Thank you. Thank you.
I do have a question, though, Madam.
Okay.
Nate, do we have to pick three findings to make this since it requires?
No, I think the motion was based on the fact that.
Unable to.
That he was unable to make at least three of the six required findings.
So, we don't have to pick them out?
No, I don't think so.
Thank you for that clarification.
The motion before us is to deny the master plan amendment. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
Okay. So, we have.
Aye.
An aye. So, we have four ayes and three nays. Motion carries.
So, the denial carries.
I would recommend that you also make a motion as to the development code amendment.
Yes.
Sure. Madam Chair.
Commissioner Lawson.
I move that after giving reasoned consideration to the information contained in the staff report and information received during the public hearing, the Washoe County Planning Commission deny development code amendment case number WDCA 18-001 to amend Washoe County Chapter 110 Development Code at 110.218.35A to remove neighborhood commercial slash office zoning from the areas in which mobile homes and manufactured homes are prohibited to be placed, being unable to make at least one of the following findings of fact as required by Section 110.818.15E.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay. It's been moved by Commissioner Lawson and seconded by Commissioner Chesney. Any discussion?
I would make the same comment that I made in the earlier motion. I think that, you know, I'm very sympathetic. I think it needs to be changed. I just don't think this is the form to do it.
I agree.
I agree. I agree.
Any other discussion? All those in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
Opposed?
Nay. So, it is.
Four to three.
Four to three again. Thank you. We are now at item nine, chair and commission items. We'll need Mr. Lloyd to come back up, but when he has the moment, but future agenda items.
Madam Chair.
Commissioner Lawson.
I heard something this, in a public comment in advance. So, forgive me.
Yes. Commissioner Lawson.
One of our public commenters suggested that cash bonds be required to, and I was just wondering if we can make a request of staff to find out what would be required to implement the requirement for cash bonds to be required. So, that would be more of an information from staff?
It could be more of an informa, Mr. Lloyd, what Commissioner Lawson is asking about is the public comment that we heard at the beginning of the meeting with regards to cash bonds to hold developers accountable for their property. Is that, go ahead.
It's something that we can certainly discuss at a later meeting. I don't want to discuss it now, obviously.
No, he's asking for future agenda items. He's asking for future agenda items.
Absolutely. Yeah.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Other future agenda items?
I don't know if we discussed this before, but is there any discussion or any action that we can take to help with the issues in Lemon Valley?
Washoe County is, is working on that as we speak. So.
Isn't there a meeting tonight?
So, you'll bring that back to us with a future.
Yes, we will. And in fact, we can ask Mr. Dwayne Smith to come back and, and give a full discussion. In fact, that's something we, has been on our radar.
Yes, because that last, you know, the last meeting is that one of, I can't remember which commissioner, if there was more than one, that was just saying, can we simply have a moratorium until this gets resolved?
But we can certainly schedule, agenda that for a future meeting. Absolutely.
Yeah, Nate, is that, is that something that, that this commission could initiate, a moratorium?
So, I'd have to look that up again. I know that came up at the last planning commission meeting when I opined that you couldn't deny a subdivision map based on, you know, wanting to hold things in place until we figure out what's going on with the water situation, unless there was a moratorium. If you want to give me a second, I can look that back up. My recollection on that is not clear if it's PC or only Board of County Commissioners that can do that. So, if you want to give me just a second, I can try and pull that up.
Sure.
Other requests for agenda items or future, while Mr. Edwards is looking that up, requests for information from staff? Because Commissioner Chesney's falls under both, future agenda items and additional information from staff.
Thank you, ma'am.
I will jump, while Mr. Edwards is looking that, is directors' report on previous planning commission items? Mr. Edwards?
Nothing to report at this time.
Okay. And Mr. Lloyd, while he's still looking that, I do hope that, I mean, I can't ask you to do this, but I do hope that in, that you talk with the Sun Valley residents as to how this, this decision impacts them and to move, move faster rather than slower on making corrections to that master plan. Thank you.
If I may also, well, Mr. Edwards is still looking, there's, just a reminder, there's going to be a joint PC. Just a reminder, there's going to be a joint PC meeting with the City of Reno on April 26th. I hope you can all attend. Also, if anyone is interested.
Where is it?
Reno City Hall.
City Hall?
Reno City Hall.
Six o'clock.
I believe it's six o'clock. If it's not, I'll let you know, but usually they.
I think that's what I asked. I think that's what it was, six o'clock.
Correct, yeah.
They need to meet in sparks, because that's neutral ground.
Well, this is, this is regarding the Reno-Stead Joint Corridor, correct?
Because it is a, it's in the city's jurisdiction of the Reno-Stead Corridor Joint Plan, it is held in, basically, the city has taken the lead.
Just a quick question. Will we be getting some kind of parking voucher so we can park in the City Hall parking lot without having to pay?
You don't need vouchers to park in that lot.
I went to a meeting where I had to go get a voucher to go in there.
Oh, that's new. You didn't have to do that, yes.
I don't know if it's changed, but otherwise, you have to park down at Washoe County after five o'clock and walk, you know, down.
I'm making a note of that, I'll find out.
Safely park.
I know Cal-Neva used to be free. Cal-Neva used to be free and now they charge.
What I'm saying, now that I'm in Reno, last time I went there for something, I had to go get a voucher to be able to be there and not get paid.
Yep, we'll find out.
Sorry.
Also, on October 8th through the 10th, there's the state APA conference, and just wanted to, let me know if you're, any of you are interested.
October, you said.
We do have some funds available for, yes, October 8th through the 10th. That's down in Las Vegas. So we can, we can provide accommodations in terms of registration costs.
But not lodging and transportation.
We just can't fly you down there or lodge you up. And then finally, you should all have received the MetroQuest, the link to the MetroQuest survey.
Yeah, good surveys.
If you can, please take that and let others know as well. Try to get the word out.
Let your friends and neighbors know. Everyone.
That's the next level?
Correct, yes. And there's basically two surveys.
Yeah, actually, your, or our MetroQuest surveys were actually better, I think, than regionals. They were, they were a lot easier to navigate and the questions were really pertinent.
Appreciate that. Yeah, we spent a good deal of time working on that. Appreciate that.
Was she washing?
Yeah. I did that one too.
Madam Chair, I think what I'm looking for is in Chapter 278. I will tell you that the practical reality is, that's going to end up being a Board of County Commissioners decision, regardless of whether it can initiate here or at the Board of County Commissioners. I think that they would end up making that decision.
But we could have that conversation.
Potentially, but I want to look that up.
Okay.
I don't think it would be wise to have that conversation for no purpose for you as a commission, if you don't have any authority to do it.
Right, okay.
And I can tell you that, you know, there would be a lot of obstacles to doing that.
So if you could, if, Mr. Edwards, if you wouldn't mind looking that up and then putting that through.
Yeah, I'll talk with staff.
Planning staff, and then they can get that out, back out to us.
Sounds good.
Any other requests for future agenda items or requests for information from staff? Mr. Edwards, do we have any legal information or updates?
Nothing else.
Okay. We're now at item 11, general public comment. Do we have any public comment? No public comment. Thank you. A motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Thank you, everyone.
Aye.
Good night.